All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for GALT, May 3rd, 2022. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we need to continue to handle our city council meetings a little differently than we have in the past. I'm now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Hines, to give a brief explanation to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Although this meeting of the GALT City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconference options, which allows the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the Raise Their Hand option to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerned an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing *9 at that time. We request that all speakers, in person and on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak. However, doing so is not required. Today's agenda also states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which will be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my comments.
All right, thank you. And now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Councilmember Van Der Berg?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. If everyone would please join us in a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
This meeting of the GALT City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 6th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 7th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
All right, thank you. Move on to Item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do I have anything from the council? No? Okay. Mr. Hines, at this time, do we have something?
Yes, I'm waiting for Public Works Director Mike Solling to join us, and he has an announcement for us, and he should be arriving shortly.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Just wanted to make you aware that we've got one of our longtime employees at Public Works, our city engineer, Mr. Mark Clarkson, has informed us that he will be leaving city service at the end of this month. He's been here for, I think, around 10 years or so, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to really get some details, but I think you're all familiar with him, and he's just been a stalwart for the city, for the Public Works Department, helped the city essentially expand the sewer treatment plant, which was a major endeavor some years back, and has put us in a very good position for a long time going forward on both the water and sewer utilities. He, about four years ago, took the city engineer position when he was previously the utilities manager, and he took over the city engineer position, and has basically developed a rather robust capital improvement program and established a lot of good procedures for delivering projects from various types, including facilities and, of course, the utilities, but also transportation projects, too, and one of which we've got coming up later this year, the C Street Improvements Project, which has been before the council a few times. So he's been a very vital staff member for the department and for the city, and he's got some very, leaves behind some very big shoes to fill. So we have initiated a recruitment for that, but I'm not sure if he's going to be able to make a council meeting, but I wanted to at least make that announcement to you all and how much we appreciate everything that he's done for the city in his tenure here. He's just been phenomenal, and I've been very blessed to have him as a city engineer in the last three years that I've been here. So, again, very big shoes to fill, but anyway, we just wanted to express appreciation for Mr. Clarkson and all he's done for the city in his tenure here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solling. Sad news, I know, with already having staff shortage in the department to lose another huge asset. It's tough. Okay, moving on to Item C, Presentations. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Moving on to Item D, Public Comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. Written public comments may also be submitted via email prior to the meeting to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud. And we, our first public comment, Mike Little.
Officer Little?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. For those who don't know me, my name is Mike Little. I'm the president of the GALT Police Officers Association, and I've been so for just over a year. As city staff and council knows, we just entered negotiations with the city, so no specifics, obviously, are going to be spoke about that. However, I did have a couple of things I just wanted to get out into the public's knowledge. Recently, as of last year, the GALT Police Association delayed contract negotiations six months and then ended up waiving most contract negotiations out of good faith for the city for the COVID pandemic, as well as some department issues that were going on at the time. We did that in a good faith with the city, moving forward for a long-term goal, to continue our positive relationship with the city. Over the last year, officers have continued to show up through a mass amount of overtime, some of that being forced, losing one of their own, and having outside agencies recruit them throughout the year. While this council has supported the police department through and through, and we appreciate that, as well as City Manager Lorenzo Hines having an open-door policy which has allowed clarity on the association level, we understand that moving forward, we are at one of the most critical crossroads this department and association has had. Currently, our members are 25% underpaid on a salary level compared to outside and surrounding agencies. That is quite alarming if you really look at it, in an era where police officers are few and far between, and the quality of applicants coming into the profession are not necessarily ideal. Currently, our members are extremely recruited and highly regarded to outside agencies because of the level of efficiency, training, and the knowledge that the department provides them. Our members at the GALT Police Association can plug into any department and outwork any of their officers that have been there for years. As we move forward, I want to emphasize one thing. Another rebuild cannot happen in our department. We have been through too many in too many years. I've been here for eight years and have been through three rebuilds, been through three mass overtime phases, and our guys are tired. So as you guys look towards budgeting, please keep that in mind, that our officers, who go out 24/7, 365, risking their lives, are doing everything they possibly can to stay here because they love this city, but sometimes if they don't feel that they can do enough for their families, they have to leave, and we're trying everything we can to prevent that. We want to continue the level of service that we provide and to grow that level of service as well. I don't want to end on a negative note. However, just yesterday, as some of you were there with the Law Enforcement Memorial for the state, where we interned Officer Graywall, we have federal next weekend in Washington, D.C. Having the support of the city, whether you guys see it or not, does mean a lot to our people. Seeing the city council members there, City Manager Hines there, we appreciate you, and I just wanted to thank you guys for being there because, in the long run, those little things do add up to kind of easing some of the pain that our guys do feel. So thank you. And as the process goes forward, if anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out. You guys know how to get ahold of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Little, and thank you for your comments on behalf of your fellow officers. And I just want to say on that note, I do thank my fellow council members, Mr. Sandu, Mr. Papinow, and Mr. Lozano for attending those ceremonies. I and Councilman Vandenberg were not able to attend, so, but we wanted to be there, but weren't able, so apologize. But thank you, gentlemen. Next public comment?
Scott Robinson?
Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Scott Robinson, and I'm here again to request the city council amend the current cannabis ordinance in GALT to allow retail cannabis stores. My wife and I currently own a cannabis dispensary in the city of Davis, but we live in Wilton and want to open a store closer to home and in a community we are fond of. We have been open in Davis for three and a half years and have firsthand knowledge of how much a city can benefit from cannabis tax revenue. We listened to the last GALT council meeting on April 19th, and a lot of time was spent on the budget and economic development. At the last council meeting, there were a few remarks that stood out to me, such as, "There is a sales tax leakage in GALT of $3.3 million annually," "That GALT citizens leave the city and spend about $3 million a year elsewhere," and "That GALT is actively seeking out businesses to move to the city." The desired businesses mentioned were fast food restaurants and junior box stores, presumably because they have the customer base and the revenue to help stop the leak. In Davis, our business has been included as one of the top 25 tax contributors to the city alongside Target, In-N-Out Burger, large car dealerships, and gas stations. Since we opened in late 2018, we have contributed over $1 million in cannabis tax just to the Davis General Fund and $1.2 million in state sales tax. In addition, we also contribute 1% of our revenue to the Davis School District and First Five Yolo, which has totaled a little over $120,000. Also mentioned at the last council meeting was the online survey campaign, Get Involved GALT. I looked at the Get Involved GALT survey questions and did see that one showed 64% of people who answered were in support of a 10% tax on gross receipts on cannabis sales in GALT. That 10% is the same percent that we currently remit in Davis. A little over half of the people who answered the survey said they support allowing cannabis businesses in GALT overall. Thank you for your time. Hope everybody has a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any further comments?
No.
All right, and no online comments? Nobody on the phone?
None.
Okay. All right, moving on to Item E, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. We will start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No update tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Papinow?
Excuse me. Last Thursday, the 28th, SAC Metro Air Quality Board met, and it's a pretty extensive agenda, over a lot of smaller items. A couple highlights of note, we increased communications contract with the communications provider for the district by $249,000 to one, just over one and a quarter million. That was questioned pretty strongly, and actually, the argument was pretty convincing that that was a good expense to reach the goals of the district. And we had the first reading, review of the budget, and the long and short of that is they will be considering some fee increases to make up the projected ongoing 4% deficit for the next 10 years.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg?
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, a couple of things. I attended a Cal Cities Community Service Policy Committee meeting last week, and there was a lot of discussion about mental health advocacy for legislation regarding mental health and changing, doing what we can to influence the change of the Welfare and Institution Code to allow for folks to, who need it, to be given services, whether they choose to or not. And our Senator, State Senator Eggman, has put forth a number of bills that will address mental health and some of the outreach resources that can be given for mental health to homeless. We also had a robust discussion about homelessness, and as it relates to not just housing, but mostly drug addiction and mental health issues, and some things that other cities are doing around the state are mobile crisis vehicles. These are in larger cities, you know, one that comes to mind was about 65,000, where they ran a mobile crisis vehicle out with a mental health worker in it, a couple of days a week to interact with homeless residents. And so that was the bulk of the discussion. Also attended a SECOG board meeting, and we had our mid-year budget amendment to this year's budget, and then we also approved draft budget for next year. Additionally, some, approved the funding around mechanism for next year, and there is a new piece that's going to be a part of that. It's going to be a, it's called a revolving match. So cities are going to be able to apply for a revolving match sum that will help them independently apply for federal and state funds that require the match. So we're kind of reusing the same money, but it will put us in a position that we'll be able to more effectively obtain some of these grants that are out there. And then we approved the draft, the final regional trails network map, and I want to thank our city staff for being engaged in that. It's quite a lengthy process, and hopefully it just doesn't sit on a shelf, it actually gets activated. But if you go onto the SECOG website and take a look at it, it's, it really tries to connect the region with each other all the way up from, you know, the north parts of Yuba City down to Ileton. So take a look at it when you get a chance. There's some gaps still, and SECOG will assist with cities and counties to try to fill in some of those gaps, and so the trails that they're looking at are more paved, so you could use bicycles and whatnot on it. So that is pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. That's interesting what you were talking about with the, I'd love to hear more about that. Maybe you can bring some more back on your first meeting about the homeless discussion and the mental health and all that. Love to hear more about that. All right, myself, I had no official meetings. I had a GALT Youth Commission meeting last night, which I was unable to attend, along with some other mentors, unfortunately, but there are a couple other items of quick note. Several of us attended the CAPS luncheon on the 21st of April, honored our CAPS volunteers, the police department, and also many of us attended this morning the memorial service for Mr. Bill Forrest, our staff member who passed away recently, so it was very well attended. With that, we'll move on to Item F, Our Information Consent Calendar. It is recommended that Items 1 through 4 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from council on the consent calendar? No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I did get a question on warrant 221795. It's on page four of the warrant document, and it was for TDI signs, $60,706. That is for the wayfinding signage. We're finally moving forward with getting those signs developed and hopefully implemented around the city.
Okay, thank you, sir. I suspected that might have been what it was, but that's why I asked. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, well, with that, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the following. Item 1, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of April 19th, 2022. Item 2, Receive and File Warrants for Period Ending April 20th, 2022. Item 3, Wave Second Reading by Title Only and Adoptive Adoption of Ordinance to Amend Section 12.12.020 of the GALT Municipal Code Regarding Definitions. And Item 4, Approve Summary Vacation of the Public Utility Easement at Greenwood Cottages. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilman Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar is approved, 5-0. Moving on to our next item, G, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
Yes.
I'm sorry. We normally don't, but we do tonight. Mr. Hoffman?
Back again. Councilmembers, tonight you're hearing the housing element modification. The city council adopted the 2021-2029 housing element back in September 7th, 2021. The adoption took place after almost a year-long process with a high level of interaction and coordination with the Department of Housing and Community Development, in addition to public workshops, hearings in the GALT community. HCD reviewed and approved the approved September document, and on December 7th, provided a letter identifying areas where they needed a modification or wanted additional information. That letter is included in your packet as attachment 2. In January, staff began working with the HCD staff and our consultant, Mentor Harnish, to address these concerns, and the main areas included affirmatively furthering fair housing, providing goals, priorities, and metrics, clarifying the sites measures and to preserve at-risk housing for low-income households. So staff prepared a document, we provided it to HCD, and as part of your packet, they provided a letter back in, on April 4th, identifying if the council adopted these changes, they would certify our document. The majority of the changes were in regard to the policy document. There were no changes in the existing conditions document. On page HE31 of the policy document, that's really the big change. It's in regard to affirmatively furthering fair housing, and what that means is you're providing housing that takes into account race, sex, age, and makes sure it's not biased towards any one specific group. So tonight, I'm asking the city council to re-adopt this housing element so we can get it back to the state, and that concludes my presentation for the 11th time you've had to see me.
All right, I'm going to now open the public hearing regarding this matter, and then we'll hear if there's any dialogue from council on this. So open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any comments from council?
Mr. Hoffman, just for the clarification, you know, we did adopt that element, and we did modify it. What the major modified, as you said...
It was in regard to affirmatively furthering fair housing. The state of California, we've had over like 28 bills within the last two years, and this was guidance that we didn't get until April. We provided a lot of information in our document, but they've moved the bar further along. I think they told us the information we needed, we provided it, they reviewed it, and they said, "No, we want more." So we provided more. I don't think the policies and programs that we've added are going to require that much more work, but there is going to be work that we have to do. This is an element that's heavy in implementation measures and programs. We're going to be busy for the next seven years, but it's really on that page, HE31. When you look at the policy document, it's all in regard to the affirmatively furthering fair housing aspect of this document.
And that's HE31, and we are as a staff, head of the staff, you know, we are prepared for that, whatever they're asking, right?
Which section?
HE31, right? That's what...
Yes, yes.
I just want to make sure we're clear.
Well...
I know that that's a lot of things you need, but...
I would offer you this to the council. We don't have a choice. We're not being asked to do this. We're being told to do this. This is all a state-mandated program. Every single piece of information that you see is required by the state of California. It's not programs that we're coming up with. So we're somewhat under the requirements of the state, and if we don't provide these programs, the state starts holding back money, whether it be money to parks, whether it be money to transportation, definitely grant opportunities. So they're really, they're tough. We're going to do it because we need to do it, but again, this is all mandated.
Hey, thank you for your hard work from years you didn't have. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment during the, or any comment from the public during this hearing?
Yes, we have Mary Magga.
I'm Mary Magga. I am the pastor at GALT United Methodist Church and a proud resident of GALT, California. I am here to thank Craig Hoffman and our city manager for their robust response to these requirements by the state. I guess as somebody who lives under the requirements of God, I'm here to say that we can follow requirements unwillingly or willingly with joy, and I'm hopeful that we can follow some of these requirements by the state willingly and with joy. And I'm hopeful that our project at GALT United Methodist Church, in conjunction with Christian Church Homes, that hopes to provide housing that is affordable for seniors and veterans, will help to check some of those boxes for us. But I'm here tonight because I want to share with you a few statistics that we gathered together as part of our exploratory work in endeavoring to provide housing for those two groups that are much in need of housing in our community, and that is, that you probably already know this, but 12.4% of our population in GALT is 65 and over. So that's one in eight of our GALT citizens is a senior citizen, and of those senior citizens, one in five is a veteran. In my own work with both veterans and senior citizens, I have become aware that many of our veterans and senior citizens are living on the very edge of poverty, some of them in poverty, partly because they didn't do work that kicked into a pension program or into Social Security, including many of our veterans that came home from... or into social security, including many of our veterans that came home from serving in various wars and found themselves incapacitated for various reasons from working full-time for a period of years. Did you know that 40% of our senior citizens in Galt are living on $20,000 annually or less? Now, you think about that in terms of a ministry that we have to our senior citizens at Galt United Methodist Church, the Sunshine Food Pantry, we deliver food to hundreds of seniors every single week in order to fill that gap. Most of them do not live in affordable housing situations where they only have to pay 30% of their income, which is what our plan, our proposal for our housing units will cap at 30% of income. Most of them are spending, guess what, between 60% and 70% of their income on housing. That leaves very little left for utilities and food, let alone buying things in our town that add to the tax base, right? The median income for seniors throughout Galt is $35,000. So I'm saying this to you because I really want us to be enthusiastic and proactive on the housing front in Galt. We are a diverse community with diverse peoples, and the issue of addressing homelessness starts with enough housing available for those who are on the edge in terms of housing. Friends, you can't say this, but I can, since I'm speaking on behalf of the public. We do not want to have the problems with homelessness that are happening just to the north of us and just to the south of us. And if we're going to avoid that, it's gonna mean being proactive about providing housing. Not in 2029, but let's break ground in 2022 on a project that has been provided for the city in a positive partnership with a nonprofit that has done 18 months of legwork. So I just, I want to say that this could be the beginning of a real renaissance in housing for this community that will help to provide everything that we're looking for in terms of economic base, quality of life, and let's just say it, love of our neighbor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have any other comments? Ma'am, would you like to speak?
I didn't write up for one, but I'd like to follow up on her.
Can, do you want someone to fill a sheet out for her?
Would it be all right?
If you make it brief, we'll go ahead and let you without a sheet.
And I do need your name.
Please state your name and go ahead and make your comment.
As you can see, unfortunately, I took a fall. That's why I'm on a walker. I am a senior citizen and property owner here in Galt, and the one thing I would like to see beyond everything she asked for, which is absolutely beautiful, is for the disabled. So the American disabilities act comes into play, and could that be provided as well within this new housing you're thinking of?
And your, and what was your name, ma'am? Please state your name for the public record.
Phyllis Johnson.
Phyllis Johnson, thank you, ma'am. Any further comment during the public hearing?
No public comment.
And not online?
No.
Okay, public comment period still is open on this item until we close it. I'm Craig. I have a couple of questions for you. You can answer them from the desk, I guess it's okay. Thinking about what you said about how we haven't, want to have a choice, and unfortunately, I agree with you, and, you know, I have, there's a word for such a thing when you said, if we don't do this, we'll just take back money, and where I come from, they call that extortion. Just gonna throw that out there, but I don't like the fact that the state has to come in and tell Galt how we grow and how much we're gonna grow. I think, I think all of us would like it a lot better if we had control of that ourselves. Unfortunately, as you mentioned, almost 30 pieces of legislation have made it otherwise. Let me ask you this, Craig. I was thinking as you were speaking, if there was further legislation that comes into play, I mean, obviously 30 in just the last few years, during our housing element, are we required to update our housing element each time new legislation comes out, or is it just like an eight-year cycle deal? And then...
It's an eight-year cycle deal, so we'll have to update it in 2029. And that's one of the reasons why it was such a big jump between the fifth-year cycle, which went up to this point, and this cycle. So much legislation took place over the last seven years. It was a big pickup.
Yeah, 284% from the fifth to the sixth, between the fifth and the sixth cycle was what we were allocated, which is...
As far as those RENA numbers, yeah, it's a big jump.
So let me ask you a couple of quick questions here before we round this out. Do you really think any of these, do you really think any of this legislation or anything in this housing development is gonna make housing more affordable?
No.
Other than zoning for specific projects, can we force developers to build such homes that they come forward?
No, we provide zoning, and we provide some guidance as far as what's built within that zoning, but we're required to provide the opportunity. We don't build the housing.
All right. Thank you, Craig. Well, I may not be known to the public, but the last time we voted on this, I voted no. I don't, I don't want it to fail. It has to pass, as Mr. Hoffman said. I voted no symbolically because I was upset with the fact that we had to do this, but I will support it this time because we have to, and so... Is there any additional comments from the council before we move on?
No, no, just thank you for asking the questions that you did, Mayor. And Craig, in general, what does this mean to the public? Can you, you know, just make it in simple, straightforward terms that, the changes before and after?
So we have a housing element, we're required to have it. Really, the big changes for the city is citing the various uses, whether it be low-density housing, medium-density housing, high-density housing, and that's the greatest effect that this community sees. Where does this housing take place? And it was pretty easy for us this time. Aside from having to do a general plan amendment and rezone on one site, that was it. It's a lot of programs for staff to implement. There's a lot of programs that are gonna come back for the, to the council, and I don't want this to come across as harsh criticism of the state. I do believe that we should provide housing to meet the needs of various members of the community, whether it be low-income, medium-income, or somebody that wants to reside in different style housing. I just think that the state has been so extreme, I don't see how they're making providing housing easier. They're just, they're making it harder to build, and I don't think that's good for the community.
Great point. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a quick comment, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you for your work on this. I know it's been a long process, if you will. What I did, what I don't want to lose sight of is the amount of public outreach that you did. This is meeting number 11 regarding this in the city, and I want to thank you for your work with Secog on trying to wrangle this in and please the State Department that oversees this as they move the goalpost on us all year long. So, so thank you for your work, and I'm willing to support this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. And just to kind of follow up on what Jay's comment was, just real quick, in layman's terms, for those that may be watching at home or those in the room, basically what this housing element does is, the state of California is required, each city is designated a number. For Galt, it was like 1,920-something, up from 600 last time. Basically, it says that we have to have zoning available for that many units, and that number represents a varying type of zoning. It could be high-density, low-density, medium, so on and so forth, affordable, so forth. There's a bunch of different categories. And although we cannot force builders to build those things, as mentioned, we have to have property basically set aside for those things. And although it might sound like a good thing, the challenge would be if we do that and we have somebody come along with a great project that wants to build an X site, we have to say, well, we can't do that. Or we could rezone it and let them do that, but then we run the risk of violating our designated areas, and so it becomes very tricky. So we're basically putting place cards for certain types of projects throughout the community, and that's what the housing element's about, and it's an eight-year cycle. We have to do this every eight years. So for those of you who are just wondering what we're talking about, that's it. So if there's no further public comment for the hearing, I will close the public comment period, and I will look for a motion to approve, adopt a resolution re-adopting the California Environmental Quality Act initial study and negative declaration and approving the general plan amendment re-adopting the 2021 through 2029 housing element. Moved by Councilmember Lozano. Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Adopted 5-0. Moving on to our next item, a regular calendar. First item's gonna be from our city manager's office. Subject is gonna be the proposed 22 to 23 and 23, 24 general fund budget. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, if you and members of the council, if you could join me in the council, in the council agenda report that is in your packet, I'm going to just briefly go through the packet, and then we'll go through a PowerPoint. Thank you, Tina. But I want to make sure that council knows that we're not only having this presentation before the council, but I'm also trying to educate the folks out there and our citizens about the Galt budget process. I want this to be as transparent as possible. And so on page one of the staff report, we give a little background regarding the development of the budget. We presented the narrative budget on our last meeting on April 19th, which sort of set the general context for the development of this budget. During the narrative budget study session, we hit on seven recommended budget strategies, and you will see implementation of those strategies, or at least most of those strategies, in this particular budget. We also let the public know that we do this every two years, and every other year within those two years, we come back with a mid-biennial adjustment. The budget that's before you is $17.4 million in '22, '23, and $17.2 million in '23, '24. On the next page of the council item is some information on community input. And so we've let the public know through various presentations and our social media that we are welcoming their input into the development of this particular budget, and actually all budgets. Get Involved Galt is the vehicle, and so we're just asking everybody if you can get out there and fill out the survey. We do have some preliminary results thus far, and those results have indicated strong support for the PD and parks. And we'll have more firm results as we get closer to the end of closing the survey. But I wanted to let the public know that the opportunity's there if you want to have input into this budget, and I wanted the council to know that we're seeking public input. On page three of the staff report, I wanted to bring to council's attention that we will be presenting the draft budget tonight for the general fund. And so the departments will be prepared to tell you a little bit about their departments. I will follow up with a brief summary of their budget request, and we will make it through all of the general fund departments. We'll also present the 22, 24 fee schedule, and there are some changes there as well. May 12th, Public Works will take the 22, 24 CIP and the five-year capital plan to the planning commission. May 17th, we will come back with a discussion of the other funds. And Fund Six, Parks and Rec, and Fund Forty Seven, Measure R, and Fund Thirty Eight will take center stage during those conversations. We will also cover the other 20 funds as well, but those are the ones that are, that we're going to highlight. On June 2nd, we're having a special meeting, budget workshop, and we're going to talk some more about the budget. Gives council an opportunity to, again, ask questions, resolve any issues you have regarding the budget, and just give us more time to talk. On June 7th, we will be conducting the final public hearings for the budget, and we will also be seeking to ask council to adopt the 22, 24 biennial budget. Slight change in the budget calendar. I've just moved the adoption up from July, or June 21st up to June 7th. And so as we proceed to the next page of the budget, we've laid out the budget from a revenue side and from an expenditure side. As you can see, the budget is, as I mentioned in the initial pages, we're gonna go over the expenditure section of the budget tonight and for council to understand what the department's expenditure requests are. The revenues, we are happy to talk about those, but those are our best estimates at this time. We will come back in early 2023 and revise those revenue estimates based on what we know at that particular time. So this is what we know right now. And so far, we've got enough revenue to cover the departmental requests, and we actually have, in the budget year, about $400,000 left over, and in the budget year plus one, we're projecting to be close to a million left over. Page, and we will go through, and I have an entire PowerPoint that we're gonna dissect that particular table. On page five of the staff report, we start sort of the summary of the seven strategies that we're looking to build into this budget. And they are strategies, and they're sort of harbingers of things that we have to keep in mind as we're putting together this budget. And the first thing is the utilization of our undesignated reserves to make sure that we are saving up where we can. Both of these reserves will utilize one-time payments or one-time funding from the general fund balance to set them up, and then we will find a mechanism from all the other funds to have those funds contribute to, and I'm speaking specifically about the facility maintenance reserve. Oh, I'm sorry. No, that actually, what I said actually pertains to the vehicle, Internal Service Fund. But for the first reserves that you see on page five of 12, yes, we're asking for $100,000 from the general fund one time to just basically set that aside. It still stays in the general fund balance, it's just designated for a particular purpose. And then that $25,000 reserve for ongoing and emergency repairs, again, that's, that still stays in the general fund balance, it just sits in a reserve as a just-in-case and if we have any facilities issues. The next issue that's before us, and you heard from the POA president earlier, is we've got labor agreements, and we're right in the middle of that process, and so that's a pressure on the general fund and all of the other funds where labor is paid. This budget...
Excuse me, Mr.?
Yes?
Do you want questions as we go along, or do you want us to wait till the end? Because sometimes you do that.
So, so I'll tell you what, let me get through, let me get through the document, because I want to lay out the document. I know the five of you understand it, but I'm actually speaking to the folks out there and making sure that they can get through this document. If they have any questions, they can come to me or come to you. And so page six of 12, seven of 12, lays out our strategies and the pressures that we're up against in putting this budget together. We've got landscaping and lighting districts, we've got three LLDs, and then we have a number of properties in the city that aren't covered by LLDs. covered by LLDs. So there's a major inequity that exists. Unfortunately, the general fund bears the brunt of that inequity. You will see later in this report that our long-term financial plan changed as a result of increased support for the LLDs and parks. And so, you know, this is sort of a constant issue that we're going to have to deal with. So we've got the LLDs, we've got weekly parks, maintenance reinstatement, the Vehicle Replacement Fund, which is what I started to mention earlier. Again, we're looking for one-time seed money from the general fund. And then every year, each fund where vehicles are assigned will contribute into that fund for the replacement of those, replacement and maintenance of those vehicles. So that way, we isolate anything related to the maintenance, upkeep, fuel, tires, you name it, related to our vehicles. And so it's all in one cost center. Number six on our list is increased efforts for economic development. You'll see that in this budget as well. One of our public speakers mentioned our sales tax leakage issue, and it is an issue. It's about 3.3 million annually. We're not trying to get all of that back, but it would be nice to get some of it back. And so we'd like to bring on some help to help us recruit and put GALT on the map as sort of a player when it comes to a commercial destination. And then the number seven, we're going to move the mid-year budget assessment up a month. We were able to get it to you in March of this year. I'm going to push it back to February next year. The following year, we're going to get it to you in January, because we need to keep track of things. And so now we'll, I guess, I'll keep going through the report. Page nine of 12, we have what we projected as the general fund balance at the end of the biennium. And so we still have a good balance. The underside balance is about 10.6 million. Typically with the general fund balance, it is essentially a reserve for contingencies. And, and so we only use the general fund balance if we have to use it for one-time expenditures. So the general fund balance cannot support ongoing expenditures, because at some point the balance draws down, and then we have no balance, and we have no support, and then we have no cushion. So that's why I mentioned those, those things earlier, the reserves, again, one-time in nature. It's not an ongoing situation. And then we have a sort of an analysis on the general fund revenues, because I mentioned earlier that these are our best estimates for revenues. We lean on our consultants, HDL companies, to help us with the property tax estimates, sales tax estimates. We will also be bringing them on to help us with TOT estimates as well. And so we'll, we'll get some professional help there. In any area of TOT, I wanted to mention to the council, and this is at the bottom of page nine of 12, the city has a deferment program for TOT that allows our hoteliers to hold back the TOT payments until we eliminate, or we withdraw, or we cancel the emergency on a city level. So I wanted to let council know that at this time, the Finance Department estimates that roughly, there's roughly $261,000 in TOT that has been deferred, and that if we choose to end that local emergency, that's 200,000, that's $261,000 that will come to us in the quarter following the adoption of the budget. And I don't believe these dollars have been added in to our revenues. So that $406,000 grows to $666,000, $67,000, should we choose to remove that local emergency and allow our hoteliers to remit their TOT. I've spoken with the city attorney about this. We're okay repealing the local emergency, because we're still under a state emergency. So we don't run the risk of losing any support for CARES Act, or ARPA, or any of those things. The next page, and we'll talk about the general fund expenditures in a second. The next page is a revised long-term financial plan. We've laid out in detail what's occurred with long-term, the long-term financial plan revenues, how we've tweaked those, and long-term financial plan expenditures, and how we've modified those, or how those have been modified because of this budget. But essentially, the long-term general fund surplus deficit, the general fund surplus for 22, 23 decreased by 676,000 versus the preliminary LTP. However, the LTP retains a projected surplus of about $407,000. Again, this does not include the 261 from the hoteliers. But, so we're looking at $407,000. The impact in 23, 24, a little less significant, and we're only projecting a decrease of $93,000 at that point in time. So, and then we've got projections from 24, 25 out to 2031, 32. We're looking at an average projected surplus of about 1.3 million if everything holds. And then at the end of this report, I'm going to turn it over to our finance team, and they're going to present the fee schedule, because I've been so focused on the budget, I've just sort of left the fee schedule to them. And, and again, a reminder that we'll be presenting the majority of the funds, the other 20, the other 25 funds on May 17th, with this particular focus on Fund Six. Council has a desire to return to weekly maintenance, and so what we, what we will be doing on the May, on May 17th is giving you sort of a menu of, here's what weekly looks like, price-wise, staffing-wise, and for all 21 of our parks, and here's sort of, here's what every two weeks, every three weeks, something of that nature, so you can all see different, different flavors of parks maintenance. And so next, May 17th should be interesting. We'll also be presenting the Measure R budget, and so the GALT PD will be presenting their general fund budget, but I wanted to let you know their, their budget also, also is apparent in Fund Forty Seven and in Fund Thirty Eight, and you'll be hearing about those next week, or on May 17th. So let's, let's go to the presentation. For the folks in the room, there are copies of the presentation in the back if you want to follow along. Feel free, we'll also be posting these online. And while we're here in the chamber, and if there are questions that come to you while you're on the way home, or if you have insomnia and can't sleep, and, you know, if this question is burning, burning your brain, feel free to give me a call or send me an email in the morning. I'll be more than happy to talk budgets. That's kind of what I do, in addition to being the city manager. So let's see here. Okay. Uh-oh. I know it did.
It just worked.
You want to run a panel? Or does it--
Huh?
All right.
There it goes.
Sure? Okay, all right.
Thanks, folks. A little technical glitch there, but we got it. All right, so this is our 22, 23, and 23, 24 proposed budget. As I mentioned earlier, we've got about $7.4 million in total budget. Again, I'm reading at the, I'm getting that figure from the general fund expenditures, because it's actually the, the number of expenditures that actually drives the budget. And because that's our spending plan. So 17.4 million in 23, and 17.2 million in 24. And so we'll start with, oh, I'm sorry, council member, you, did you, did you want--
It's fine.
Okay, okay. And so we're going to start with some of the recommended strategies that are mentioned in the report. And again, these are one-time, sort of isolated, isolating parts of the general fund balance. There's no guarantee that we're going to spend these reserves, but they're there if we need them. And in the event that we need them from other things, council always has the ability to dissolve the reserve and put it back into the undesignated general fund balance.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible if, since we, you did the presentation, but now we're on the slideshow, if there's any questions on each slide, if the council has a question about particular slide, could we do that?
Yes, yes.
We don't have to keep trying to jot down notes and--
Oh, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Matter of fact, before we get started, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about this slide, actually.
Okay.
So just to clarify, the $100,000 and the $25,000 seed money, those are in addition, those are in addition to the 25% reserve fund policy we have now, the five and a half million, or whatever it is right now.
Yes.
So that's not part of that. It resides within that, that reserve policy, but it's not part of that 5.5 or--
Right.
25%.
Right. So that, that, that reserve for economic instability stays off to the side.
Right.
No one touches that.
Okay.
And so what I'm trying to do is, is strategically utilize the $7.6 million in cash that we have in the general fund balance.
And so the 25% obviously seems a little small, but you're saying that that's just seed money, and obviously that fund's going to grow, because you're going to have something where there'll be contributions from each department into that vehicle fund, right?
Well, in this particular reserve, this is our facilities reserve. And so what we want to do is put $25,000 aside, and then I would be looking for a commitment from the city to put at least $5,000, $10,000 in there every year from the operating budget.
Okay.
Okay, just to grow it. The hundred, now, the, the reserve that you spoke of, you are correct, that's the vehicle replacement reserve. And so that reserve, we're also looking to have seed money, and, but like you said, each fund that has a vehicle attached to it will contribute to that reserve.
So initially, in this budget cycle right now, you're looking for basically $150,000 in seed money ideally, right?
Essentially, yes.
All right, thank you. Please, if anybody has any questions, just simply just mention you have a question.
Yes.
Okay.
Like all our presentations, it's a conversation, not just a presentation. And so we start with the, the budgets for the elected officials, even though it contains more than the elected officials, but it's mostly elected officials. Our city council, our city clerk, our city attorney, and our city treasurer. And so the budget we're about to see contains the expenditure plans for those, those departments. We put some information here in the slide presentation, just in case the public gets a copy of this, and they'll give some background as to what the council does, the clerk does, city attorney does, and the city treasurer. And so here is the elected officials' budget, and what I've done is I've just combined all of those budgets, because these budgets sit at the top of our budget. In general, the baseline change from FY '22 to '23 is there is a, there is an increase in about $43,000, or 5.6%, and in 2024, there is a decrease of $11,000. So small changes, nothing, nothing huge. The one thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, I had a discussion with the city attorney and, earlier, and so we may have overestimated the city attorney budget for '24. We think it's probably going to hold to 349 or 350 as it was in '23. Again, this is a budget plan, and it really depends on how, what the demands are from the council and the city as to what we actually spend.
I have a question on this slide, too.
Yes, sir.
So, again, I'm glad that you're putting this out there, and should the public see this, this is important, but I want to make note that it could be misleading to see a number that says, you know, that the budget proposes $170,000 for the city council. That doesn't mean that the five of us get paid, you know, a combination of 170--
No, no, no.
I mean, but that's the perception that one might read, they go, wow, the city council is 170 for the five of them?
No, 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 that's, that's, and I'll be happy, if anybody has a question about that, I'll be happy to go over the council's budget. But no, that is--
I was excited to see that.
[laughing]
I was like, oh.
[inaudible]
But those dollars sit in the general fund for support of the council, and I believe there are various expenditures that are charged to that budget. And, but, but anyway, that's the elected budget. Again, the baseline has not changed a whole lot. 5.6% has actually gone down, and it will go down further in 2024, once we make that adjustment to the city attorney's budget. Administration. So this is essentially my budget, and as the city's chief administrative officer and chief troubleshooter, as I like to call myself, this is, this is my area. The area also contains our Economic Development Division. Amy Mendez is our Economic Development Manager, and Stephanie Van Steen, our Human Resources Risk Management Director. And so this is our budget. And so essentially, the baseline changes. Now, you'll see that in FY '23, that there is an increase in my budget of $730,000. I guess you're looking for me to add clarity to that, huh?
Yes, sir.
[laughing] So 65% increase. Last year, my first year with, with the city, we embarked on a couple of reviews. The first review was of our Information Technology Department. The second review was of our Finance Department. And we brought in consultants just to have a look-see, make sure we were structured the right way, we were operating the right way, we were following best practices, and various other things, and I think we're better for it. One of the things that they recommend is recommended was the IT department, or the IT division, be moved from the Finance Department into the City Managers' Department. And so what you see there, that, that big jump, is essentially the relocation of IT into my department.
So, question for you, so that, moving it, so you're saying that that, a similar number, I mean, there could be some increase if you're going to beef up IT or whatever, but there's a, there's a current number that already exists, but it's under the Finance, and now it's moving from Finance to your department?
Yeah, yes.
This is not a creation of an entirely new number?
Nope, 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 nope. The city manager is not buying a helicopter and a helipad, no. No, this is just merely us restructuring our operations in accordance to the best practices of the consultant. The other thing, so you see the transfer in there under baseline changes. The contract for the retail commercial recruitment firm, we've built in $40,000 for that. We're also, and by the way, these things that we're doing here also have a tie with our strategic plan, because we have our economic development efforts in the strategic plan. And for the folks out in the crowd, council adopted a strategic plan for '21 through '23 back on January 18th of, of this year. So you're welcome to get out online, it's posted on our website, but that strategic plan lays out our policy direction for the next couple of years. And so all of our budgets need to have some element, or are primarily driven, I'm sorry, by that strategic plan. So one of the things that we've done here is economic development is part of the strategic plan, so we put in $40,000 for a retail commercial recruitment firm, and basically, this firm would act as our agent and go out and recruit businesses into GALT. And I'm not, we're, you know, we'd like to see a Dairy Queen, we'd like to see the In-N-Out, I would love to see an In-N-Out burger. But we need help in getting the attention of these very large and very popular franchises. So we're going to bring in some help to, to help us get there. The $15,000 that we have, that we're also adding is to increase our employee tuition reimbursement program. Currently, we provide about $1,000 to employees who are seeking tuition reimbursement. As part of our strategic plan, we are building our succession plan. We are, we have committed to building our employees, making sure that they grow-- So, we're going to bring in some help to, to help us get there. The $15,000 that we have, that we're also adding is to increase our employee tuition reimbursement program. Currently, we provide about $1,000 to employees who are seeking tuition reimbursement. As part of our strategic plan, we are building our succession plan. We are, we have committed to building our employees, making sure that they grow as professionals, and we are encouraging them to get training. And so, I'm asking for an additional $15,000 to increase our employee tuition reimbursement program in hopes of motivating folks to get out there and go back to school, or, or achieve those goals that they've been thinking about. The other thing is, our HR department wants to establish a, a new employee onboarding program. It is a automated onboarding program, is very streamlined, it gets us out of the paper intense process that we're in right now, and, and it's also a best practice, so we wanted to add that, too. But let me take you back to the baseline changes. Again, once we remove IT out of the, the big transfer there, it is just a minimal increase, and if you can see in '24, it's, it's actually gone down by 1%.
And I have a question for you real quick, since you mentioned that. I was just, if you could add some clarification on an item, so, the moving of the, hang on, let me find my page right down, the moving of the IT from the finance department to the city manager's department is basically initially like 600,000 and change, I don't have the exact number here.
Mm-hmm.
But yet, the decrease in the finance department for that same period is only $200,000, so there's like a 400, why, so why would we not see, if it's just being moved from one department to the other, why wouldn't it be a close figure from one to the other?
Well, because the finance department is also asking, has a request for council as well. That's going to offset that reduction. And, and Finance Director Boring will be happy to tell you about that. So, this is administration. Again, we realize, because it's, it's my budget, and typically, my budget and the elected's budgets tend to get the attention, but we wanted to make sure that we built it to continue the administrative responsibilities that I have, and to continue providing services to the 26,000 folks we have in our town, and also stay consistent with our strategic Next up is finance, and I'm going to turn it over to Matt Boring to talk about his, his department. And Matt, I have the clicker over here, I'll just, just let me know when you want the, the next slide.
All right. So, just a brief overview, the finance department is committed to provide incredible and transparent management of reporting the city's finances, following our legal and professional standards. And just kind of a brief overview of some of the things we do, we maintain the city's financial records, the budget, long-range financial plan, accounting, accounts receivable, basically, we get to play with all the numbers in the city. On the next slide. So, just kind of our baseline changes, fiscal year '23, the finance department budget is projected to decrease 508,000, and fiscal year '24 is a further $10,000 reduction. And the, the main things causing the change in '23 is discussed previously, there's the $635,000 reduction transferring IT to admin, and then, a request for 115,000 for the senior accountant position. And we have some more information on that on the next slide.
Matt, before you, before you proceed, council, I wanted to give you some context for this position. We requested this position in mid-year, and we're also requesting it now. One of the things that was mentioned to me, and probably a little, little, little firmer than that, one of the reasons I was hired for this position was to bring clarity to Galt's financial picture. I was also hired to make sure that the infrastructure was in place, to ensure that that clarity continues into perpetuity. And so, what Matt is discussing here is the last tweak, the last change that I needed to make in the infrastructure, to make sure that what we started continues. Matt?
All right. So, we're requesting the new senior accountant to assist with the complex financial, federal, and state reporting, preparation, review of various annual and comprehensive financial statements. So, we have a list of some of the upcoming GASB pronouncements that we're required to implement. Down at the bottom, GASB 87 is the one we're working on now diligently and learning how complex it is. We're required to change how we report all of our leases. And then, some of the other upcoming ones, there's GASB 89, which requires agencies to expense interest during the construction period rather than capitalizing the interest, so it'll require analysis and further review, because we'll have to do more year-end transactions to comply with the reporting standards. GASB 94, reporting of public-private and public-public partnership arrangements. At the moment, we don't have any, but even though we don't, it's something we still have to review on an annual basis, just to make sure there aren't any changes. GASB 96, financial reporting and software subscription services. So, we currently have an annual subscription for a lot of the software that we use, so we'll have to change how we report that at the end of the year. Do you have a question? Okay. And GASB 97, which it further changes how we report retirement plans. And in addition to these, there's, there's other ongoing tasks that they would provide for the department and the city. First, it's supported by the most recent and previous plans that we've done to analyze the finance department, and also, when we talk to our external auditors, it's something they also support changing. It would also assist in system updates and, and keeping our system up to date. There are a few kind of manual adjustments we have to do to ensure internal controls, where we can't adequately use our current financial system, because we don't have the staff to go and, and maintain it. There's several things, like we've implemented the automatic requisitions to create purchase orders that we've implemented in 2014, but we haven't had the time to go through and make adjustments, so we add it to keep it going and, and make sure it's functioning, but it's not optimal, and it requires a lot of manual tweaking to, to make sure everything flows through the system, and, and we can make the purchases we need for the city. It'll also add a ability for cross-training with the finance department, which is something that's difficult at our, our management level. And it's something I wish we had more of now, is we're going to start recruitment for our new accounting manager, so if we'd had a, a senior accountant, that would alleviate some of the burden of that.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. And as Matt mentioned, yes, our, our accounting manager has submitted her resignation, and she will be leaving. It's a critical vacancy, again, because we don't have a succession plan in place, and so, because typically, this position would ascend to that accounting manager either on an interim basis or on a permanent basis. And so, this also helps with our succession planning. And from my perspective, I know that there is another analyst on the accounting side. We've got an analyst on the revenue side. Now, I need one on the accounting side, to make sure that we keep up with these GASBs. By the way, for the folks out there, that's Government Accounting Standards Board, that's what GASB is for. They basically make pronouncements that control how we account and report the city's financials. And so, we have to adhere to those GASBs, kind of like what Craig said earlier, it's not a discretionary thing, we have to adhere to them, and if we don't adhere to them, council and the public hear about it in the, in the terms of audit findings when we present the annual audit to you. And so, we are very sensitive to making sure that we can get these things done. We believe this position will help us get there, as far as addressing these, as well as a number of other items that need to be addressed within our, within our finance department.
Lorenzo, I just want to add that...
Yes, sir.
These are the approved GASB statements that are coming out. The Government Accounting Standards Board currently has 11 projects that are in various stages of draft form that will be coming out in the future, so it's, it's a revolving thing, it's not like they, they come up with so many and they're done for so long, it's, it seems about every year, you get at least one or two.
Yes. And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, just for clarity of the public, back on the prior slide, you saw that the, the baseline budget went down by 508,000, it would have gone down by more, but again, finance is requesting another, another 115,000, which offsets that, that reduction.
I have, I have a question for you on that, Mr. Boring. So, beans that you guys were just talking about that, so I'm still struggling, and again, I'm not an accountant, so just going to apologize in advance, but if we have, we have a 500, so we have a $635,000, $635,000 move by taking the IT department from finance to the city manager's office, but then, we're asking for a position, which is $115,000. So, basically, that's a $520,000, still, still, still is a $520,000 reduction in the, in the finance department, if I'm doing my math correct, roughly.
Mm-hmm.
But yet, in the proposed budget, the finance department, from, from now to the proposed budget, in that same exact timeframe, is only decreasing by $248,000, so we're still missing like 200 and some thousand dollars here somewhere. I'm just trying to, do you catch, do you follow me on that, or no? So, if you take the 508, so we're transferring 635 out, but we're putting 115 back in for a position, so that means that the finance department would still, their budget would go down by $520,000. But yet, on this page here, on this graph, it shows the finance department's budget goes from 1.7 million to 1.4 million, that's a difference of $248,000. So, where, so basically, what I'm saying is, the finance department is really only losing $200,000, when they should be losing 500,000 by that transfer of IT. So, how come the numbers don't match up?
Well, are you, the 1.7, is that in the '21 column, or is that in the '22 column?
I'm looking at the, the 1.7 is the '21.
Okay, what's in the '22 column?
1.968.
That's what we're measuring from.
Okay, so we're going from 1.968 to 1.461.
Yes, sir.
Correct, okay, all right, thank you for the clarification.
No problem, no problem. These are the kind of questions we like.
Going back to what you were talking about with the purchase order, software system, my understanding is we have a software system that could improve our efficiency and service, but we don't have the personnel to effectively use it?
So, we implemented, it's, it's part of our ERP, so our overall financial system. In 2014, we used to have a paper process where a department would fill out a sheet of paper and forward that around for signatures, and it would come to finance once it's finally approved, and someone would enter that in the system to create a purchase order. With the automated purchase order, the originating department creates a requisition in the system, and then, depending, we set up the system with dollar thresholds, so we have like supervisor, department head, finance director, city manager, and city council. Depending on the dollar amount of the requisition, it goes through those different approval levels, and we define who is responsible to approve that based on our GL account numbers. But since the, the system was implemented in 2014, we've added new users and added different authorizations and accounts, so the system is functional, we just have a lot of redundant data in there that confuses the system, so occasionally, I recently had an issue where I have the authority to approve a requisition, but the system won't allow me to, because it gets confused, because I have four different lines with conflicting information in there. So, we just need someone to go through and clean up the data and do that on a regular basis.
So, doing that would theoretically improve our, our efficiency within the process inside, and also prevent some of the black eyes that we had in the past, where audits found things that were not billed appropriately?
Yeah, it's one of our internal controls, so it, it helps to ensure that we don't have any issues. I think on average, we process about 425 to 450 requisitions per fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Papin, now, if I, if I may add, and Matt, if you don't mind, we, we, over the last six months, entered into business process reviews for our ERP. And so, each section or module in our ERP, we've contracted with our vendor to come in, speak with our folks, make sure that they're using the module and the interfaces correctly. Now, I think we're in, still in the middle of that, that process, but what we're finding out is that we've got folks who are using old interfaces, because they're comfortable, that have not been properly trained on the new interfaces, because they're uncomfortable, but, you know, but they need that training. So, we've got those kinds of situations, making sure that we're getting the most out of our ERP. What we, one of the duties of this position is to coordinate those BPRs between our users and the manufacturers of our ERP. Currently, or prior to this, prior to Matt being hired, yours truly was that coordinator. And now that Matt's here, he's having to do that on top of all the other things that he's doing. So, it would be great to actually have an accountant be that liaison. The other thing that we're looking at, and we're so far behind, is automated time sheets. I don't even bring that up in the executive team meetings, because it's a, it's a, it's just a, a point of contention, because we haven't gotten there. We're still filling out paper time sheets. So, and because we don't have anyone to drive the system implementation, and again, we need an accountant for this, because now, we're going into general ledger accounts, and we need somebody who can do that. We can't assign that to a technician. So, you know, but this is, these are just a couple of examples of the things that we're, we're, we're looking to do with this position.
I'd like to make a general statement, if I may.
Yes.
So, maybe it's just the way my mind works, but, you know, we have, we have a 10-gallon bucket, and we're trying to, you know, fill it with nine gallons. And we, at this point, we're looking at one specific gallon, we're not looking at all nine, and it's hard to make sure that you can do your job if you don't have a global understanding. We have, you know, negotiations to, on several different elements, we have parks and wrecks, we have the financing. I feel like, you know, these are not necessarily bad things, but the reason I didn't want to approve this last time is because I want to be cautious about the things we have to vote for in the future. If I was comfortable that we can cover those items, and, you know, the tangible, the, if I, we can cover those items, it'd be easy to say yes, but if, without, with the insecurity of what we have yet to decide and hasn't been fully discussed, it's very difficult to approve things, and then, two weeks from now, a month from now, look and say, well, you know, if we wouldn't have approved that the second time, we'd have the money to cover it. Saying that, knowing that we filled the finance position, the finance department to its full staff of 12 people, if I don't, if I remember correctly. So, I, I'm not saying that these are bad, you know, I'm just trying to give you a, a feel of how I look at...
Right.
...all of our problems.
And we, and we, and we perfectly understand. What you're going to see tonight is each department laying out exactly what their request is. So, when you're, no decisions need to be made tonight, okay? So, so all we're doing is letting you know, here's why we need it, we wouldn't bring it up if we didn't need it, and as you go through this budget process, we talk about revenues, we talk about a Fund VI, we talk about labor, and all the other things, this gets thrown into that pot of stew that we have to, that we're gonna, that we're gonna have to reconcile at some point toward the end of the budget. What I'm trying to do, as your city manager, is figuring out a way to make all of these things work. And so, because I recognize that, yeah, if those GASBs, if we have problems with those GASBs, and I got 11 more out there, then I got to come back in front of this council and this public in January, because we may have missed something with a finding. And I'm the only CPA in the city, so that's a deeper, that's a deeper level of commitment for me, because I can't have findings on my watch. So, but what we're doing here, no decisions need to be made, we understand, we're going to give you the big picture, you can get more of the big picture next week when we, when we do parks and the other ones.
I just want you to understand where I'm coming from, so, thank you.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. So, all this, we're just starting, gentlemen, we're just starting.
And I don't want to kick a dead horse here, but I do want to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Vandenberg, and I appreciate your, your clarity on that, Mr. Hines, and again, I, we know we're not making decisions tonight. I, I think we're, I think where Mr. Vandenberg is coming from, and I was actually thinking the same things, is that, you know, the, these things are important, and the things you're doing in finance are important, and we don't doubt that, even though maybe the general public doesn't understand the importance of some of these positions or what you're asking for. Again, I want to stress that the public is very visual. Here we are in a second meeting, almost back-to-back, well, in the same month, probably, talking about a position, that's a new position that's being asked to be created, for, I understand, a great purpose, and it's, and I'll give you the benefit of the doubt that it's needed, six-figure salary... Um, six-figure salary for something that you guys are asking for, and this is two times this has come to us. But yet, I just spent an hour of my life this afternoon uh, on social media answering questions about lighting and landscape districts for about the nine hundred and fiftieth time in my life. Okay? Um, I would say about every other day, there's a new comment online about parks and parks and recreation and landscaping and all that. And I know that we are gonna see the picture coming up on the next meeting.
Right.
It's gonna be a very good conversation, I'm looking forward to it very much. But again, I think what the public sees is the public sees us talking about this. And the public sees us taking ARPA money after seven months and spending it on this, this and this. And what we've seen so far is they've seen us grow the government. But they have seen zero money going to things that are important to them. And some of those things are visual things to them. And their patience is growing very thin. And frankly, my patience is thin. I'm very excited about seeing this next meeting. But I think what Mr. Vandenberg is getting at is here that I'm reluctant to approve anything until I start seeing some things. Maybe it would have been better if we would have maybe talked about fund six prior to talking about this. But I understand it's the general fund, so maybe the hierarchy makes things make sense. But again, I'm only speaking on behalf of citizens that I've been talking to and that I hear from on a daily basis. And so I think, I think you get the point and I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I, I get the point, there is a structure, you're right, and there is a hierarchy and we will, we will give you the picture. But what we're trying to do tonight is if you do approve these, these changes, you now have justification for them. And the why, all right? Now, regarding those folks online that are asking questions about parks and LLDs, you are, as you know, more than welcome to give them my name, my number, my email. And Director Solis and I will address their concerns directly.
Oh, oh, I do, sir, I do.
Okay.
But, but what I can tell you about the people of GALT and you can't change people's habits. And as you can see, there's probably fifteen people in the, in the audience here and I applaud you people for coming and being a part of the civic process and all that. But the, there's, there could be two hundred comments on something we're talking about tonight online. And these people, for whatever reason, they don't feel comfortable talking to city administrators, they don't want to sit down with you, they don't want to sit down with Mr. Solis, and, and I can't force them to do that. So all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is that we're the elected officials and they feel comfortable approaching us.
Understood.
So I can't just be like, can't help you, you go talk to Mr. Heinz. Believe me, I do that. I gave your name out like three times today, but I don't know if you're gonna get contacted.
And you don't need to say, you know, we can't help you, but hey, if you want some clarity on that issue, go talk to Lorenzo and Armando, they'll give you some history and some background.
Well, I mean, here's an idea here, just that we're talking about it. Maybe, like, I love how in the staff report it explains the lighting, I mean, I've seen something similar in probably, you know, four dozen staff reports in my three and a half years in the council where it talks about the lighting and landscape. It's very easy to understand when you lay it out, it's like a one-page thing here.
Yes, sir.
But if someone in the public wanted to see that very document right there, they would have to go to the city website, find a staff report, climb around whatever. Have we ever taken that and put it on our social media and said, hey, for the public, there's been a lot of discussion lately about lighting and landscape districts, here's some information that could be helpful? Can you imagine the impact that that would make? Where I don't have to now copy and paste my responses over and over and over on the subject. It, it would just be, and in the spirit of transparency, I think it would go, it would
Oh, great.
A big deal, so.
So what we can do is we will, we will, um, actually get that out on social media or maybe pieces of this report out on social media as a run-up to the May seventeenth meeting.
Yeah, just in layman's terms, I mean,
That's, that's fine.
Because when we explain to people, people when they hear it, they're like, oh, okay, well, you know, they're not happy about it, but then, but it makes, they're like, well, that makes sense to me and thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
But then you have twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine other citizens, well, ask the same question the very next day and you're like, so.
You got a lot of folks on your feed, my goodness. Okay, all right. So anyway, so that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do and that's what we're doing tonight. Just giving you an overview, you're, don't feel pressured to do anything, just
No, we don't.
Just listen, okay? And, um, so other than that, Matt, are, are we done?
I'm done.
Alrighty, so let's go to the, and thank you, Matt. And so, um, next up is the illustrious Chief Kalinowski to talk about the GALT PD. And so the chief will give an overview of the department and, um, then we'll take a look at their budget schedule. If you have any questions, feel free to, um, ask us, one or both of us. Uh, but there's not a whole lot of changes in the PD budget this year. Chief, I'll leave it to you.
Yeah, that's good news.
Yes.
Pretty clear what the police department does, so I won't be, uh, bore you with the details, but we take the bad guys to jail and essentially keep the community safe. We're involved in many facets of the community that have to do with quality of life issues, um, and other events that occur in the community to support the community outreach and civic pride and those related issues because after five o'clock and on the weekends and holidays, we are the face of the city. Um, within the organization, we have three divisions, two operating divisions is what I would call them, which is field operations, which covers our patrol division. And then we have support services, which is our detectives, which includes dispatch records, our CSOs, property and evidence and budget and everything else they get. And as you know, through social media and other venues, um, we promoted a new captain and two new lieutenants to watch those divisions and run those divisions, uh, on my behalf. So, um, there are no proposed changes in that regard. We do carry two unfunded positions in the general fund at the police officer level, but we're not to the point yet where we have a request for the need to, um, unfund those positions or add funding to those positions. You can switch this slide if you like, Mr. Heinz. So the good news is I cut my budget by seven percent or five hundred and ten thousand dollars. So it seems like, Matt, I have some money for you for your position, I'm sorry. Um, but nonetheless, that's mostly related to the roof project that was ongoing, as you know, that had significant issues for us for many years. Um, Public Works did an excellent job with the, um, contractors to get that buttoned up and handled. So next year, we don't carry that burden and then a year out, we have an additional slight, um, reduction. Our baseline changes are just our ongoing salary and benefits. You heard from my Police Officers Association president, I echo everything he said. I will say it as many times as I can until at least three people listen and hear me, that there are those adjustments that we need to make. Um, I would say that this organization, the GALT police officers, the support staff that serve this city have worked incredibly hard. And all I can do is provide the culture and ensure that we're adhering to, um, our mission every day and adhering to policy and ensure that my staff is doing their job, doing the job the way they're supposed to. I couldn't be more proud of the organization, but we have one element that's missing. And I cannot have an organization where employees are twenty-five percent under the median for the market. That's just unacceptable for me. Um, so I'm hopeful that we will find a solution for that. Um, I've enjoyed being the police chief here. I will continue to be the police chief until, um, it's my time to go. But, um, we are at a critical juncture and it is time for us to do what we have to do. And, um, I think that's as succinctly as I can put it. Um, I'm not trying to be disrespectful or rude or confrontational in any fashion, but, um, my folks need to be heard and, um, I do appreciate that. So, uh, your time at least. And so I'm open to any questions that you might have. But, uh, we do have a reduction in the budget and no significant request in the general fund for any changes in our operations.
Chief, I apologize for blindsiding you and not asking you to figure this number out earlier. Um, average, uh, law enforcement experience of our line staff. Can you give me a ballpark on that?
We presented that, we ran that out. I think we are going to be at fifty-eight percent of our rank and, well, it's just gonna be our officers. I think it's fifty-eight percent of our staff will have thus in five years experience in the organization. It's one of the reasons why we asked for the captain's position, so we could move a lieutenant, quote, "down the hall closer to the operation and be here and available on the weekends." So I believe that's where we're headed. We may be in the forties now, but if we're successful in, um, attracting and retaining our current staff, that's about the number we'll be at.
Chief, I have a question. And, and this has no bearing, this has nothing to do with any, obviously our negotiations with our unions are confidential at this point and can't disclose anything that we've been discussing, but I heard something the other day and it kind of made me think and I was just curious. Um, what's your thoughts just as a chief and knowing that, knowing the, the thoughts of your officers and, and how important you've expressed tonight that, that, that pay gap be, um, be lessened? Um, I've heard of some massive incentive numbers being thrown around, you know, like agencies offering like one-time incentive packages for people to come online. From your experience, is that, is that, is that, um, is that, uh, um, what you've seen in other agencies, do you think that's helpful? Or do you think that's not really some, I mean, is it just a, do you think that, I'm just wondering, if people come on, there has to be strings attached to that because the people could just take that and then leave after so many, so much.
Right, and I, so I think there is a place for that, but I think more importantly, until we fix the structure of the pay scale to make sure that we can retain people, I think we will, um, uh, if we're offering huge bonuses, I mean, there's, it's a wide range of things that happen. I think that's lower on the priority list and I don't think we get our bang for the buck for, um, I think, so let me say this a different way. I think we've done a good job hiring high-quality, high-character individuals into the organization that serve this community. And I think with the right structure in place, just leaving it general, um, on that, on the pay stuff, um, I think we could close that final gap and not need, um, what could appear to be excessive incentives. Because I think it's, it tends to be dead money that, you know, you're throwing around and maybe sometimes you're, you're getting other problems and things that you're not aware of, so.
Well, and your department faces, our, our department, your department, no disrespect, but
Yes, no, I got you, I got you.
Obviously retain, it's, it's twofold, right? It's retainment and it's hiring and retainment, right? So, uh, to my, my thought when I heard that stuff was, well, it might help with hiring, but the retainment aspect seems like it's not a long-term solution, but.
Right, and my only, my only focus is the retention piece. Maybe that would have been a better way to say it earlier when I wasn't getting all emotional about our memorial events the last five days when I'm thinking about my staff. So, um, I think it's all about the retention piece and, and we get that, you know, money's limited. And I, telling you that the staff that we have here and the city for all departments, I've been incredible. The police department does not operate without the support of all the departments in this city. Um, and they're all intertwined and interconnected, whether it's the finance position or all these other things because they affect me at the, at the end of the day. So, um, I don't envy the position anybody's in. Um, but to your point, the, um, I would rather focus my efforts on the retention piece of our existing staff and ensure that, um, this rebuild that we've engaged on and all the work we've done with leadership development and, uh, bringing the department together as one organization continues. Because in my view, um, we're as strong as we've ever been, so.
Well, thank you for your thoughts on that, I appreciate it. Does any of the council have, uh, questions for Chief Kalinowski on his piece?
Okay, alright, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, so you've heard me advocate for the finance department, my job is to advocate for all the departments. I've got a group of young, talented officers in the GALT PD. That was made clear to me, one of them sitting back there in the box. And my job is to make sure that I make GALT their a consistent home and the only place they want to be by surrounding them with resources and culture, training and whatever's necessary for them to be the best that they can be. And so we're looking forward to sitting down with them regarding, uh, the labor negotiations because as the chief pointed out, as a city, well, the chief didn't point out the, you know, the whole city, but it's, it's the PD, it's all of our salary ranges. This is a can that's been kicked down the road way too long. And now when Lorenzo Heinz Jr. shows up, now we gotta fix this. This thing has been in the makings for the last twenty years. And so we're gonna try to fix this. We're not gonna be able to fix it all at once. But again, I don't want to lose the core of our young, talented folks. So I've got to figure out a way to fix this. And, um, so with the key, with the chief's help, um, you know, we're gonna get this done. We've built promotional opportunities within the, the GALT PD so we can allow folks the opportunity to get trained, to move up and to make all PD, make the GALT PD home. Now, as the chief mentioned, there is one more thing we have to fix. And so that issue will be coming to you at some point in the future too. So, Councilman Vandenberg, there's another thing for you to think about, okay?
And, and I appreciate you advocating for them. Obviously, you know, it's no secret that public safety is, is a high priority in this town, if not maybe the highest. But, um, and our surveys recently have reflected that, which was no surprise. And I, and, and I think all of us agree, but I also want to remind you that you, you don't need to, you don't need to cheerlead that hard for them because I think this entire council here has, has demonstrated
Well,
immense support so far thus far.
I cheerlead for them all because that's what you pay me to do.
But, uh, yeah, but just want to say that I, I, I feel like we've always been very supportive. Um, hopefully we can continue that, we'll have to see how these negotiations, of course, can't elaborate on that, but
Understood.
Thus far, with resources and what we've been able to do and what's been presented from, I think there's been no wavering on our support of our public safety.
But just like the finance position, I wanted you to hear my thoughts, okay? Because I am your employee, so I wanted you to hear my thoughts. Community development. So clearly, we haven't heard enough from Mr. Hoffman tonight. And he does enjoy the stage. And so Craig, why don't you tell us a little bit about community development and then we'll move on to his budget.
All right. So, community development, uh, we provide planning, building services for current development proposals, code compliance services to ensure compliance with city laws, long-range planning services to the community. In our department's, uh, made up of, of three primary groups, we have planning, we have building, safety, and we have code compliance. I've always thought of community development as, it, it's easy. We're a customer-driven department. And the success of this department is based upon people returning to that front counter. And if you don't provide a good service, they don't come back. We're a revenue department. And so the, customer service is a big deal in our department and we try to make sure that we have staffing that makes customer service available to this community. That we're providing the services we need to in planning, um, getting proposals in, creating projects that ultimately go to construction. When projects go to construction, you ultimately get sales tax from them, you get property tax from them. So we're a revenue department. Uh, next slide, please. I think the big changes that you've seen, and we discussed this in mid-year, is bringing on board and restoring the building official position. It's a big deal for our department. It's mentoring of our junior staff and its consistency. And I think in the long run, it's a cost savings by having a full-time staff position rather than paying money out to a consulting company. But I think those are the big changes you see. I think in the upcoming years, you're gonna see a very conservative department, based upon guidance that we've seen from you, making sure that we're taking care of infill projects, focusing on vacant parcels that are within the community that maybe haven't been, uh, received much, uh, treatment over the years and less worried about expansion. So that's our department in a nutshell. But I think in the next budget, you're seeing a very conservative department and we're trying to provide the best service we can with the staff that we have.
I have a question for you, Craig, because this has to do with development, I guess. Um, it's actually a two-part question, but the second part's probably not yours to elaborate on and I can ask another, I can ask Mr. Heinz or someone else. But, um, under the general fund revenues, uh, this is page forty-five of our packet, uh, it talks about property tax estimates. And again, I know these are estimates, we've, these are, this is just what we know based on what we have now. But, um, HTL is predicting, um, well, they're saying that property taxes are estimated to grow at an average of five point two percent through, uh, fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. So they're, basically, their estimate says that we are gonna have a five percent, five point two percent increase. Uh, now is that, is that, is that a, is that a five point two from, now I'm trying to understand, does that mean from now to twenty-seven, we're gonna see a five point two percent increase? Are they talking about a five point two's increase year over year through each fiscal?
They're talking about, on average, if you were to take the, the projected increase for each one of those cities and you were to run a summation just for an average, it's gonna come up to five point two percent.
So does that mean?
It's not gonna be five point two percent every year, one year it might be, you know, uh, four.
That helps clarify, okay. Because I was just trying to understand, does that mean that they're predicting that between now, so from, from, from where we're at now with how much property tax revenue we bring in
Right.
To fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, they're estimating a five point two percent increase in that time period?
On average. On average, yes. So, so what we try to do when we present these long-range numbers is we'll try to give you an average of a certain period and tell you, on average, you're going to see this number every year. And as opposed to giving you 4.2, 5.7, it just, it's just confusing, it's easier.
But it's, but it, but I'm just trying to understand, I still don't want to understand our, this is, this is not a year, you're saying on average. When you say on average, then.
Year-over.
Then you are talking about year-over.
Yes.
Okay, so then that leads me to my, so this was my concern. So, obviously, a 5.2% increase in property tax would equate to, I mean, unless we have housing prices changing over, which we do now, clearly. But if that was to say not continue where housing prices continue to increase, let's say they were to go flat, for example, we would basically essentially have to maintain a 5.2% growth rate year-over in order for that to be accurate.
Well, that's based on our current housing stock. It's not based on any projected housing stock. It's based on where we are right now.
Well, what, I mean, I'm only concerned because, again, you know, Galt historically averages less than 1%. It's a 0.8% growth rate year-over-year. So, to say that we're forecasting a 5% increase for the next four, you know, five years, that's, and me, that's pretty, that's very optimistic. And although we have a lot of projects infilling the works, I'm just, I'm just wondering, again, what's, if that's, and again, I know you might come to us in, in early '23 and say, we're going to reevaluate, and we've seen some things, and now we're going to, and I get that, I do.
Right, right.
Does that make sense to you?
Well, the thing is, I'm having a hard time drawing the nexus between the actual collection of property taxes and Galt's slow growth. Because the actual collection of the taxes, the revenues, are based on what's on the property tax rolls right now.
Okay, right. So, Sean, if I may.
Yeah.
So, you, if Galt does not grow, just for clarification, try to get this settled.
Right.
If we don't build a single house, our, our revenue will grow 5%.
Five point, yes.
Whatever, what they, that's what they estimate, it's pretty reliable data. And that, and that goes to another question, there's another, there's multiple projects going on right now in town, and those are just to be added to the existing numbers we're hearing right now.
Right.
Right. But I, but what I'm getting at is, okay, let me give you, let me, let me try to break it down in simpler terms. So, let's say we have a, a property tax base of, I'm just going to use round numbers here, $5 million, okay, last year. Well, we've had a lot of houses turn over now, they've been turning over at higher prices. So, now that tax base on the same amount of houses, not new houses, but just the same amount of houses, could be, you know, 5.5 million because they're now turning over. Now, those people are paying higher property tax rates, okay? So, but if that were to stop, if those existing houses were to not be turning over at higher rates because, say, interest rates go up, people, you know, prices stagnate, okay, now you would expect with no new development that we're not going to see an increase. It's going to be 5.5 again next year, and it would be 5.5 again the next year after that. And it's not going to increase because those, because people aren't paying a higher property tax rate. Now, if development came in and we have more houses, then obviously, we're, we're drawing on those, so that increases. But my concern is, the 5.2 seems very optimistic when, when, I mean, it seems like that's very likely from now to next year because we have always, but all the way through '27 seems very, I'm only simply, and I maybe, I'm not explaining it right, but I, it just seems very optimistic.
Well, the, the thing is, we get this from HDL, and this is all they do. This is their bread and butter. Now, the other thing with HDL, we meet with them quarterly. So, if any of these numbers so much as hiccup, we know. And so, this is based on the last quarterly report that we have. And so, these are based on the dollars that are on the county tax rolls, I think for 1920, I forget that, how the county, it's always two years in arrears or one year in arrear, but this is, this is their best estimate. These folks are used statewide by a lot of cities besides us, and bigger cities besides us. So, I am, I am comfortable with their estimates. I'm also comfortable with the fact that we meet with them quarterly. And, and, and so, these numbers get revised, tweaked, they tell us all kinds of things about our property taxes. So, I think 5.2 is good for now. It is our best estimate, as I said earlier, and that's all we can do.
Right.
You mean, that's, I mean, if we, if you tell me to pick a, pick 4%, well, what's the justification for 4%?
No, and, and the reason, and I, and I get that, like you said, we, that's why we meet quarterly, because we make adjustments. We, we make, we mess, we make, not we, but our, our, the professionals that we hire make best-case scenario predictions based on historical data, current data, and all the, whatever data they gather to, to do what they do, and they make predictions. And again, they make a best estimate, maybe those estimates are even light, maybe, maybe they come back in a quarter from now and say, oh, wow, it's actually more, or maybe they come less. And again, I understand that we only can do that. But the reason I mention this is because property tax and then the sales tax obviously mentions a 3.8%, that those are our two biggest revenues. The only reason I mention this is for this reason now. We're, you're not coming to, part of this budget process is not you coming to us and saying, we want to spend $50,000 and fix the roof on a building because we predicted these numbers right here, they're really good, and we can afford to do that. That's a different conversation than coming and saying, we're going to hire X amount of employees, or we're going to up our pay scales or all of our, to employees. Those, those commitments are forever.
Yes.
So, if a quarterly report comes back in March of next year and says, wow, you know what, recession came, yada, yada, this and that, you know, we only saw like 2.2%, you know, whatever. Now, we've now committed to maybe some positions that we've created or hired, which have perks and all these other things, and there's no taking those back. We don't just lay those people off. Well, maybe we do lay them off, but we don't want to do that. That's all I'm saying.
That's the hard part about being a council member and a city manager. Our job is to manage this budget. We will, when times are good, make sure that we utilize those good times in a strategic way to move the city forward and to enhance and to provide services to our folks. In times of contraction, what we're hoping to do is to be able, not hoping, but what we will do is to be able to predict when those contractions happen. I can tell you right now, 20, 2028 and 2029, there's going to be a contraction, if not before then. I guarantee you, there'll be a contraction, because it always happens at the end of a decade.
Yeah.
So.
And it just, and again, it's just because three of us up here spent the first two, hold on.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The first, you know, the first two and a half years of our term, the three of us in the middle here, spent during that contraction period, and it's very, still fresh in our memories, so.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want you to fault us for just being mindful of that.
No, 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 no. But I wasn't here then, so when it comes to managing the budget, there are levers that we can pull, i.e., let's keep things vacant, i.e., let's cut back on certain expenses, i.e., there are, there are other mechanisms that we can do before we go to the layoff lever, which I detest, because that shows, in my mind, a lack of creativity. It's the easy option. There are other options that we can pursue. The other option is driving revenue, which is why that, that consultant is in there. Because we have to figure out a way to either come up with some local mechanism for revenue enhancement, or we need to come up with a way to come up, to, to increase the sales tax number. Because granted, I know that I've said we're not going to go after the whole 3.3 million, but at least two of that would be nice, okay? And that helps us going forward. So, not only are we watching things on the expenditure side, we're also figuring out ways to grow things on the revenue side. And so, we just have to be diligent about, about those things. But I understand your concerns, those are hard conversations, and I've been with many cities who have been in that situation, but we found a way through it.
And again, I don't want to misconstrue this as us not wanting to use our funds. I don't want you to come to somebody tomorrow and say, oh, Mayor Farmer, you know, he's made it very clear that, you know, he doesn't want to spend any money, because that's not what I'm saying here. I'm only simply wanting to prioritize things, one, first and foremost, and secondly, just be very conscious of things that we create that are not easily to take back later on.
Understood, understood. We wouldn't put it in front of you if we couldn't support it, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, sorry.
I just had a quick comment on, when we were talking about property tax revenue, and my understanding of that is, is that we're usually about a year and a half behind in collection. Is that about right? So, at the very worst case scenario, at, at least as it relates to property tax revenue, I mean, we do get some supplemental, so if a house is sold today, they're not going to pay their April of '22 bill, they'll pay a supplemental, and then they'll pay in November, and we won't receive that November until next year. And so, we'll have a little bit of a heads-up on that. The one I'm more concerned about is sales tax revenue going down in, in, in a economic downturn. And I'll tell you, part of, an organization I was part of before here, being in the city, we went through the, the downturn of the economy and, and the housing market crash. And fortunately, we did, we, we had to lay one person off, and it was a person that was part-time that did landscape design, and we weren't building because there was no money to build. And unfortunately, one half-time person had to be laid off. But there are creative ways to figure out how to reduce services and, and, and I think that, at least as it relates to, and I'm going to get off the subject just for a second here, the lighting, landscape administrative piece of that budget, we've done a good job over the years of reducing that cost down as best we can so that we can save the money for, you know, pushing it out to the, to the community. So, I, I agree with the mayor that, you know, we, we do need to be cognizant of that, but certainly as sales tax comes, comes up, we need to really keep an eye on that. So, thanks.
And we will.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say, when we're putting this budget together, and my department works with public works and finance, and, and we're looking at what we're seeing from trends, I can tell you, this is a very conservative budget. We tried to use very conservative numbers. But when I'm looking at 2019, and we did 771 permits, and in 2020, we did 662. That was COVID, we saw a drop. Last year, we did 877 permits, and so far, for the, through the first four months, we've done 305. Now, does that mean that we're going to do 1,200 permits this year? I don't know about that. But the type of permits we're doing are high-volume or high-value permits. We're doing new residences. I mean, we did 56 residences in 2019, 35 in 2020. In 2021, we did 119. So far, in 2022, we've done 38, and I've got 20 permits for residences that are about ready to be pulled in the next three weeks.
And these are new, this is new construction?
This is new construction.
When you say permit totals, those aren't new houses, they're.
That's not all new houses, but those, but they're just not water heaters. They're re-roofs, they're expensive, they're additions. And I guess the nature of the permits that I'm seeing are not water heater or window changeout. That's great because that's investment in properties, and that raises property taxes when somebody's making improvements. But we're seeing the trend, that people are investing in this community, and we see that trend continuing.
And I hope I'm wrong, Craig.
I.
I do.
I know, I know. Again, very conservative numbers. We're, we're basing our budgets on actuals from previous years, and we're staying within those means. I did not get my tiki bar in the office or anything like that. This is a very lean staff, providing the service that the community expects and that the council wants to see.
Craig, just a second.
Yeah.
One quick question. I mentioned or asked about the present homes being built. How far back does that go? Does that, like Cardoza 1 is not counted in this?
Uh.
Just for a rough, just for my rough, you know, timeline.
We have issued all the permits for Cardoza 1 at this point in time. All those building permits have been issued. And so, if you're asking those numbers, I would say that those numbers are reflected in late 2020, a majority in 2021, and some numbers in 2022. If you're asking me, what are the majority of the numbers that you're going to see from a permit standpoint moving forward? It's going to be Cedar Flat over off Amador, it's going to be Verandas Dunn, it's going to be Cardoza 2, Catarina, and Dry Creek Oaks are going to be your four big projects that you see moving forward, along with Greenwood cottages and Parlin Oaks. But it's really going to be driven by Cedar Flat, Cardoza 2, Catarina.
Thank you.
So, the one thing I, I did want to mention is that one of Craig's staff is one of the two members of the city that are attending the Sacramento Valley Leadership Academy. So, I know succession planning is a, is a big, big priority for council, but I wanted to let you know, we have a future leader, Kristen Betts, who is, reports to Craig. And, and I'll take this opportunity to thank Craig. Craig was actually my first hire here at the city of Galt, and he definitely embodies the customer focus, customer-centric focus that we have here at the city, especially in our community development department. And job well done, sir. I just wanted to say that publicly.
And Kristen's local, she's a Galt resident, she's a Galt High grad, she's somebody who wants to be here, and she's somebody that definitely we see leading this city in the future, for sure.
All right.
All right.
And council, we'll, we commit to you to, just as, just as we put these numbers in front of you to show these increases, as these increases or as these, as these trends change, we will get those in front of you, too. One of the things that I don't know if, if it's become apparent, that the fruits of this, these changes that we've made regarding our financial reporting, they're, they're apparent. That long-term financial plan, the transparency of this budget, you'll be getting quarterly reports pretty soon. So, all of those things are happening. And again, this will allow not only us to track these trends, but also you to track these trends as well. Thank you, sir. And next up, our Public Works Director, Michael Selling.
Good evening, council. So, for the Public Works Department, we basically provide all the behind-the-scenes services, if you will, for the citizens of the community. So, water, sewer, maintaining the streets, the lighting, oversee, we don't provide the direct service for the garbage, but we, we definitely play the, the active, I guess, lead role on the city's behalf in that regard. We oversee the transit, I think I mentioned the facilities already, but anyway, those various areas are what, what falls under the Public Works purview. So, essentially, if we're doing our jobs, nobody notices, you know, as long as the water comes out of the tap, as long as the garbage is picked up, as long as the toilet flushes, those kinds of things. Yeah, we, we, we like to play that, you know, kind of behind-the-scenes role, so. So, the Public Works Department is essentially comprised of three divisions. First is our Utilities Division, which is essentially our water and wastewater, and that's, that's the, the white wastewater treatment plant out off of Twin Cities Road on the wastewater side, and the sewer lift stations throughout town. And on the water side, that's the various well sites primarily, and, and the reservoirs that provide the water for the city. And then, the, the next division, a bit of a misnomer here, it really should be the Streets Maintenance Division, but they provide basically everything outside of what I just talked about for the water and wastewater. So, all the pipes that are out there in the streets, you know, basically collecting, collecting the sewage and, and sending it to the plant, or distributing the water from the well sites and reservoirs out to people's homes. Basically, maintaining the roadways, the signage, the lighting, all those relative appearances, the storm drains in the streets, sidewalks, those things, too. And then, underneath that, it's kind of a sub-unit, is the Facilities Maintenance Group. And they're responsible for all of the city buildings, city hall here, you know, you heard the chief talk about the roof project before, that's under the Facilities Maintenance Division. So, so they've got all those pieces. I know the city manager talked about that Facilities Maintenance Reserve Fund, you know, for things that a, say, an HVAC unit goes down in the dead of summer, that we've got some money to fix that, or, you know, a winter storm causes a tree to crash to the roof on one of the buildings or something like that. We've got some emergency funds essentially to, to address those types of unforeseen issues that come up. And then, the third wing, if you will, of the Public Works Department is our Engineering Division, and they're responsible for the capital improvement projects. These are the large planned projects that vary. vary across that board, from water, wastewater, streets, uh, facilities, the, you know, the nine yards, uh, pool, as we, we kind of talked about at the last, uh, council meeting, uh, the parks projects. We've got a turf project that Parks and Rec, uh, was, uh, successful in getting a grant from the state for. So we'll be, uh, getting started on that for them. And, uh, that's essentially our, our three, uh, divisions, if you will, of the department. Next slide. So basically, looking at, uh, at the budget here, you've got a couple, uh, of, uh, significant increases there. Uh, and, and, uh, the other thing I want to point out is, is on the bottom there, the 23,000, that's for that, um, Facilities Maintenance Worker position that was frozen a couple of years ago, when, uh, when the city was going through a budget constraint period. That's about one-third, uh, would, uh, is proposed to come out of the general fund. The other two-thirds would come out of the enterprise funds, uh, as that position would, uh, essentially provide support services, uh, to those facilities. Uh, the, the big number there i- is essentially what we anticipate. Right now, we're kind of seeing a big uptick in construction. Uh, so that's both professional services on the, uh, plan review, plan check side, as well as on the construction inspection side. Uh, so for the, yeah, well, we're just talking about it there, the reimbursable services. So that's, uh, that's what that big number is. And, and I guess the important thing to note there is while this is in the general fund, there are revenues that come from the developers or whatnot to offset that. So it is not a true hit on the general fund. It's really a pass-through, if you will. Um, with that, I'll stop and take any questions.
So, um, and I, I just wanted to piggyback on Mike. And for the benefit of the folks that are in the crowd, if you were to look at the city's balance sheet, which has all of our assets and liabilities, and I mean, the citywide balance sheet, you'd see some pretty impressive numbers for assets. I actually went through the city's balance sheets with Councilmember Vandenberg, uh, last year. Um, you will see that, um, Director Selling and Public Works are responsible for some of the largest assets that the city has. And typically, when I go out and speak before groups, um, about city operations, I'll often let them know that the city's most valuable and most expensive assets, you can't see because they're all underground or on a bridge somewhere. So, so I thank Mike and his team for making sure that that infrastructure stays in place and that it's taken care of.
And I think that was very well demonstrated in the deluge we received this year. And even though Galt is very low-lying, very flat, we had, with all things considered, we had almost no flooding to very little. And so that's, uh, a testament to good engineering and a good infrastructure. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, could you elaborate just a little bit, just for public knowledge, on the street services? I know there's, I know there's some overlap between what you guys do in your department and what Parks and Rec does, say primarily on, uh, weed abatement, for example, be a good example. And because that's a prevalent discussion these days, um, I know that, uh, I know that you guys are part of, I guess Armando always says, if it's got green involved with it, then it's him, and if it doesn't, then it's you guys. And I, I know that, uh, well, Mr. Heinz has stepped out, so, but, um, I would like to see, not that you guys don't coordinate very closely together, I'm sure you guys do a good job, but I just wish there wasn't, there was a little more of a clear, defined, it seems a little like there's a lot of gray area between you guys' departments on this, on some of these things.
Sure. Yeah, no, essentially, yeah, uh, as far as the, the, uh, maintenance of these areas, and particularly as you noted on the weed, weed abatement, you know, for these few months of this time of year kind of thing, where you get some moisture, and then you get the nice warm days and stuff, and it grows, uh, until probably the, you know, the hotter temperatures go and they kill all the weeds. But in that time, yeah, it does look unsightly. And so we try to, uh, you know, tell our guys to basically keep our eyes and ears open, whether it's for weeds, or you see a sign down, or, you know, basically a sign's blocked by a tree or something, we gotta trim it, you know. Uh, I think, uh, there were some speed limit signs even last year, some things like that around Corrillian and whatnot. Uh, so always be keeping our eyes and ears open, uh, for those kinds of things to do. Um, we do try to, you know, coordinate to the extent that we can. I know his crews are kind of making the rounds and, and they have a, uh, I think a somewhat set, he can elaborate more, but as I understand it anyway, a kind of a set program that they know when they're gonna be in a certain area. So they'll hit stuff when they're there. And in the meantime, it might be a few weeks go by. Uh, but, you know, maybe to answer your question more pointedly, as Armando has said, you know, if there's, if there's plantings, if there's landscaping, say in a median area or something, it typically falls to them. If there isn't, if it's just hardscape, you know, concrete, whatever, then it would fall to us. Primarily Public Works is within, if you will, the back of the sidewalk to the back of the sidewalk and what's between, unless there is some, you know, designated landscaped, uh, you know, portion in that, whether it's a median or a little parkway or something like that. Uh, so it just depends. We're pretty much in the city's right-of-way, and i- in some cases, there are areas that may look like they're in the city's right-of-way. One, uh, that came to my mind here recently was over by the Wells Fargo. Uh, there's a grass mow strip area, but that's private. That's not city-maintained. So, so there can be some misnomers in some of those areas, too. I recognize it is kind of a, uh, you know, it's not that consistent, unfortunately, but, um, it is what it is. And, and again, we just try to coordinate our best. And, and we appreciate, you know, folks like, when you get, you know, comments or, or concerns, you send them out to us, or you send them to Armando, or both of us, hey, not sure who's this is, kind of thing. But if, you know, you guys can, uh, figure it out and, and address it, uh, we appreciate, you know, that input because we, we miss stuff sometimes, quite frankly. And we, we appreciate the communities, you know, being our extended eyes and ears, if you will, to address those things, so.
And I do appreciate that. And that's why I always copy the two of you, because sometimes I'm not really sure. And I, I, I want, just want to thank you guys for being very prompt. I mean, whether it's Armando or yourself being prompt and saying thank you, we'll, whatever, we'll, we'll hash it out between the two of us and figure out who that, who's responsible for that, and so that I don't have to figure that out, or, and a lot of times I don't burden Lorenzo with these things because he's got bigger things to take care of than dealing with, you know, having to call you guys up and find out who's responsible for a certain piece of sidewalk, or if it has a planter in it, or it doesn't, or whatever. And that's why I agree. Let me ask you one last quick question. You guys, so if it's a sidewalk, for example, or gutter, that's you guys, right?
Correct.
So you guys, I already know the question, the answer to this with, with Public Works, or with, uh, Parks and Rec, so I'm not gonna go there because I already know the whole background and all that. But you guys currently don't have, do you have anybody on staff right now in your department that does weed abatement that's certified to do that, or no?
We don't. We did have an individual. He retired, uh, back in December. And yeah, so we don't have anybody certified currently.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Do you, you guys, no?
I have a comment. Um, I, I appreciate what you guys do, and, and quite honestly, um, whether it's Public Works or Parks and Rec, as long, I think what our citi-, our citizens see is the city. And so, um, just like you commented, i- if something comes, somebody's gotta figure it out, because we are the city. Whether it's, I, honestly, as a citizen, I don't care who takes care of the weeds. I just want it taken care of. And so thank you for working together and collaborating. Um, and then also, just real briefly, and I know this may not be the, the form for it, but, um, i- and it may be in the works already, but I would, I would seriously consider maybe, uh, contracting in the interim until we can get somebody, um, certified to spray. Uh, because weed abatement really just isn't taking a weed eater to something. It's actual chemicals and, and all that. And so I would, I would be supportive of doing something like that to knock, knock these things down, if, if, if that is, is reasonable and it is cost-effective.
Yeah, on the cost-effective piece, that's where it gets challenging. I think it's kind of expensive, um, because it is a bit labor-intensive, and you have to go out there, you know, do your, your advanced signage and whatnot for, for safety kind of thing, or lane closures, or whatever it may be, particularly in some of those median areas and things. So, so that's a bit of a challenge. And the other thing is, is just kind of going out and getting the bids and stuff. Like, right now, I mean, we're kind of right in the middle and even kind of maybe past the, uh, you know, the worst, if you will, of the weed season. Uh, and so by the time we would get somebody on board, you know, basically the summer temperatures or warmer temperatures will be here. And, uh, you know, they'll be dead kind of thing, so. Um, but I think for the future, and I think Armando has noted, he's got a couple of folks that are studying, I think, and testing, and so hopefully that'll be the case, and, and we can coordinate, uh, through that. Uh, you know, hopefully that'll be the case. So, looks like he wants to jump in here.
Yeah, we've, um, we have one employee that has already, uh, sent in his application to take the test. We've paid the, the fees to allow him to take the test. We're waiting to hear from the state because this is state, uh, certification, uh, on where and when he will be taking that test. So hopefully within 30 days, um, we'll have somebody certified. And then we have-
Mr. Heinz did send us an email stating that thing, uh, a few days ago, I think it was, um, kind of updating us all, um, because there was some inquiry, and, and I actually did inquire, um, if we could contract out temporarily. And, and, uh, Mr. Heinz was, responded and, and kind of went over the details of the testing and, and all that. And, um, and so it's good news. And I know it's, it's just unfortunate, you know, hopefully you're right, we're good. But I, like, today I had a dialogue with the gentleman for quite a while. He was like, well, why can't we spray? I had to go into the hole. It was a lengthy discussion on social media. I explained why, you know, we lost some employees. I went into the hole, you know, it's difficult to retain people right now and lose people. Everybody's struggling. He was very understanding, I think, of that aspect. And then we had to have people retrained because you can't just go out and spray weeds unless you're, you know, there's liability and all that. And I was good about, uh, portraying it, but at the end it was like, yeah, but if the weeds are two or three feet tall, why can't we just pull them? Why do we have to spray them? It's like, so, the, you know, these are, these are average folks too, saying, hey, you know, we're not, I, I understand, they, they almost come off as like, it sounds like you're trying to make it more complicated than it is, why can't we, whatever. And so I'm trying to get them the right information and explaining the challenges we face, uh, and the fact that we are coming, you know, gonna be coming forward with some, some good options here very soon. Um, but again, this is, the weed discussion is, is very front and center at the moment, right now. Um, and I, I apologize for the, you know, the flag that you guys get, especially Armando. He's usually the, in the front line of that, those comments, um, not him personally, but his department. And so I try to defend off those people, explain, but, but thank you for elaborating, and thank you for you guys working together on stuff on that.
Yeah, and, and to those folks, I would say, you know, it's not that, you know, we don't want to do it. It is a bit of a resource challenge, and, and, and it's kind of a triage situation, you know, unfortunately. I mean, there are, are other, you know, things that, uh, that have to take priority, uh, unfortunately. So, yeah, yeah. But we do what we can, and, uh, you know, we'll continue to do that, so.
The good news is, all we talk about is weeds not being sprayed and about crime rates being high. And so, I mean, it's a small-town problem, I gotta say.
True. Yeah, fair, yeah. Good context.
Yeah, it's true.
Yes, thank you, because you think the social media is bad now, what if the toilets didn't flush? It's not visible, but thanks for keeping them going.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up is the library. And, um, we just put this in here to let you know that, um, we have a sort of a one-time, um, expenditure to replace the library roof, uh, which has come to its, the end of its useful life. We submitted a request for funding to the County of Sacramento Library JPA for the roof replacement project, and it's currently pending approval. Uh, we're just looking for authority. Um, if they don't approve it, then it still needs to be done, and so we're, we're gonna have to do it with general fund. But we're hoping we can get, um, funds from the county. And next up, our illustrious Parks Director, Armando Solis. And we're gonna talk about a, a couple of items. Uh, Armando's normally, for those folks watching, uh, Armando's budget sits in Fund Six, uh, which we'll be talking about on May 17th. However, there are a couple of expenditure line items in the general fund which also affect his department, so we thought we'd bring him up early. Sir?
So, uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. So my department's a lot like Public Works. We're in the background. You really don't hear a lot from us or get council, or uh, citizen complaints about us. And I say that sarcastically. Um, I'm, I'm talking today about one of our five divisions that we have within Parks and Recreation Department, uh, and that's the one that hits the general fund, and that's our special events, uh, that we hold. So in this, uh, budget, if you don't mind, Lorenzo, go on to the next one. Um, a lot of the, the numbers that you're gonna see are from the Independence Day fireworks, uh, military vehicles, the permit to get the fireworks, uh, lighting of the night, uh, staff time, uh, in there. This number's gonna change, uh, depending on what's decided on the next, um, the special event sponsorship. This is just the number that we used from last year and inputted some of the numbers from this year. So this isn't the final number, but it's pretty close to it. Um, and what we'll do is, uh, we'll be, uh, providing these, uh, these special events for the city, uh, put on, uh, for the citizens. If you have any questions about what's in this budget, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I don't have any questions. Pretty straightforward. Um, I'm not gonna hit you with any about those six questions, because those are for next meetings, so. Um, just specifically staying within this, do we have any questions for Mr. Solis about special events?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I did want to point out that for the 75,000 for the, uh, the tennis courts, we recommend utilizing ARPA funds, um, for those. And, um, um, in the community survey that we initially did for the ARPA funds, um, restoration of parks and maintenance of parks was the top priority. So, um, um, staying with this, uh, policy call is consistent with what the community, uh, told us in that survey. And, uh, the project specialist, sorry, Armando, uh, this is just to help Armando do those special things, uh, to keep the city, how should I say, our, our, it's almost our identity is in our parks. Okay? And Armando is the caretaker of those parks. And so if I've overstated it or understated it, forgive me, sir. But, so, he is responsible for our identity as a city. And so we're, you know, we're gonna work with him as best we can to get these things done.
And, and if I can just add here at this point, since we brought up this position, um, I'm having Jackie show up later for proof of life since I fired her at the last meeting on accident. I misspoke. Um, she will be here to present the sponsorship, uh, program agenda item. Um, and we also offered, uh, the vacant position to a local resident, a graduate of Sac State, um, a degree in marketing. So I'm really excited about bringing her on. If, you know, we've offered her the job today, and she's accepted, so she'll be going through the background now. So hopefully she'll be on within 30 days.
So we are able to hire people once in a while.
Once in a while.
I have one quick question, and then I apologize, like, just popped in my head. A while back, I brought up, there's a new, uh, sport, recreational sport people are playing. Are one of the tennis courts gonna be converted to those?
Yes.
Like half the, what's the name of that again?
Pickleball?
Pickleball. Everybody's looking forward to pickleball.
And we also, um, and speaking to the developer of the Simmerhorn Project, uh, we'll be adding, uh, pickleball courts to that park also.
I'm sure people are looking forward to it. Thank you.
Looking forward to the Galt City Council Pickleball Tournament.
I feel really stupid, but I'm not really sure what pickleball is.
Me either. It's fun? Okay.
I mean, I, I was a tennis player in high school, but I have no idea what pickleball is. Is this-
Tennis is about all the running.
Oh, lazy people tennis. Okay. Got it.
No running. It's like track without the running. There you go. For those of you watching, yes, we play rough here in Galt. Uh, so I wanted to present the next couple of budgets. Non-departmental, um, or is the depart-, is the department where basically all of the, all of the expenditure items that don't have a home anywhere else, um, sit non-departmental. We pay our insurance premiums out of there and just various other things. Um, we've got a baseline change here of almost $700,000. And the reason that, that change happened is because of an action that we took a couple of months ago to remove the frozen positions. If you recall, the frozen positions were not taken out of the budget. They were simply moved to non-departmental. And so what we, what we recommended, and thank you for approving it, is just, if we cut them from the position, if we cut those positions from the budget, then let's get them out of the budget. And so we, we, we reduced the budget from 22 down to, from 22 to 23, about six, almost $700,000. Now, some of those dollars have flowed back into the general fund balance for those positions that are still frozen. Some of those dollars have been transferred to other departments for positions that have been unfrozen. But the, but the appropriation level for this particular, these line items, um, have gone down. Um, and they've also, um, for 20, 2024, they've gone up by $310,000. And we've got a number of capital projects and maintenance projects built into non-departmental for tree maintenance, um, rehab, pavement rehab, city hall improvements, um, PD generator. Um, so these are all things that are built into non-departmental at this point in time. And this is also done with the collaboration between parks and- And this is also done with the collaboration between Parks and Public Works. Any questions? Okay. And then the next items is also in the non-departmental. We, we show our transfers out. And these are transfers out of the general fund to other funds. And so in FY 2023, we've got an increase of 88%, $975,000. And that, those dollars are to support Fund Six and the three lighting and landscape districts. So if we were to find a way to support Fund Six and those lighting and landscape districts, we would be able to retain that almost million dollars in the general fund and use it for other purposes. And so that's also one of the things, one of the dilemmas that I am working on right now. And, but I wanted to see, I wanted you all to see why the big change.
So just a quick question, just to clarify. The transfer to Parks, line number two, that's essentially represents the, the coverage of the, of the Fund Six deficit. You're projecting that it's gonna go from 808 right now to theoretically 1.3? Should we not come up with any other way to, right?
There will be a deficit, but that deficit is also shared between Fund Six and the three LLDs.
Right, but just the one light, but the 1.3, the proposed 2024, 1.31, that's, that's just for the Fund Six deficit? And then there's the lighting landscapes are all, and that equates to, makes $2 million total?
You are correct, sir.
Right. So if we were to come up with some other funding mechanism sorts, which we've been talking about, obviously some ideas, we could basically, actually theoretically, you would take care of this whole $2 million. Thanks.
So the beautiful thing about this process that we're going through is we could, we can pretty readily identify where the problem is and quantify the problem. And now that leads us to trying to identify solutions to deal with the problem. So, Finance Director Boring, did you have any?
If you're done with this slide, I just wanted to give a brief update on the fee schedule.
Okay, sure, sure. Any, any questions on the budget before Matt goes to, I'm sorry, Director Boring goes to the fee schedule?
Okay, we didn't prepare any slides. I didn't want to bore you with tons of numbers. I just wanted to give you a few changes to the, the fee schedule. There is a new item we added this year. It's not a new fee that we're collecting, it's part of our Cal Waste Agreement. It's under the bulky waste collection for additional curbside pickups. It's the fee from our, our contract with Cal Waste, and we've charged customers for this service. It just wasn't presented in our fee schedule before, so we're just adding that in to, to give more information to our customers.
So this is, this is the, this is the, this is the bulky waste pickup in addition to the one that they're entitled to already, the free one that they get once per year?
These are the additional ones. So there aren't any changes to services or any, any collections? It's just, we're adding it there so people are aware of it. And then for the changes that did occur, many of our, our fees are tied to CPI, and those increased 7.48%. And those are tied to the all-urban consumers. And we compared the January 22, or 2022 to January 2021. From the, it's, we get the information from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. And then I can answer any questions you have about CPI changes or the, the fee schedule in general?
What is the CPI right now? 7.48, is that what it is?
Yeah.
In a normal, in a normal time period, like normal meaning historically, like last two decades, CPI is usually what per year? Three, some, three?
Three or four, yeah.
Three, four. I, I know, like the last few years, it's been down somewhere between one and a half to two, but it's.
And it depends on what region of the state you're in. Because if you're over on the peninsula, it's more like four or five.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Matt. Does any of the council have any questions for Matt before we?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation for the 2022-24 budget.
All right.
Proposed general fund budget, sorry.
All right, and thank you for answering all the questions we had. I know we kind of went a little bit off, but they're all related in some way, shape or form. But, Dom, do we have any public comment on this, on the budget item?
Yes. First one is Bob Balleier.
Sorry to keep you up late, sir, and bore you with numbers.
No problem.
We can get you some coffee, Bob, if you need it.
Something stronger? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Farmer, Mayor, Vice Mayor Sandu, council members and city manager. I'm Bob Balleier, Chair of the Commission on Aging for the City of Galt. The Commission on Aging is in the budget process for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and has submitted its budget request totaling $6,150 to our liaison Director Armando Solis, who, for whose part in this, we are very grateful. I am also grateful for the city staff, especially City Manager Lorenzo Heinz's initial review of our request. And I'm aware that while, while we both share our concern for the welfare of our seniors in our great little city, we may have a different approach as it relates to the funding of the commission to achieve the same objectives. Please let me explain. One, for fiscal year 2019, 2020, we asked for and received from the city council $4,500. Two, for fiscal year 2020, 2021, we did not seek funding because we realized the city had some fiscal difficulties to deal with. And since the pandemic hit there, there were no in-person activities either by the COA or the Galt City Resource Center, except for the Christmas activity of presenting our seniors isolated at the local nursing home with blankets and socks on Christmas Eve, the result of a generous donation of our COA partner Cal Waste and its wonderful employees, as well as other local businesses, and fundraising skills of Vice Chair Andrea Johnson, here present, and the help of members of her family. Three, for fiscal year 2021, 22, we did not seek funding again because the city had not yet totally recovered from the fiscal woes it faced and the pandemic restrictions on in-person activities, especially with the most adversely affected group of citizens, our seniors, had not yet run their course. In the last half year of the fiscal year 2021, 2022, the COA again relied on donations and financial support from some of our own commissioners, as well as Cal Waste, SMUD, with whom we negotiated recently a fundraising partnership with the help of Director Solis and city staff. And we recently successfully, apparently, signed an MOU with them. We also approached the city council and city staff a few months ago to consider awarding the COA $4,500 from the city's ARPA funds to fund our activities for the remainder of fiscal year 2021, 2022, which is almost now expiring. I explained to you then that the pandemic had then and still does have a negative effect on our seniors in our community by requiring them to remain in their homes, not allow them to engage in social activities, which the COA believes has had and continues to have long-lasting negative effects upon that vulnerable population demographic. So in fiscal 2022, 2023, we are asking $1,850 for administrative activities, $4,000 for special social activities. And the special social activities may be at risk in being eliminated from our budget request. Perhaps staff, staff believes that these proposed activities could, could be done solely by fundraising of local businesses, even though we have and are already and will continue to be engaged in that effort. We're just asking the city to provide some basic funding for this, for these social activities, and any money raised by fundraising would simply be supplemental. Miscellaneous activities are about $300, and that is to offset the cost of informational flyers concerning the COA and the Galt Senior Resource Center that we, when we participate in city-approved events. We respectfully request that city staff submit our entire budget request to the city council. Obviously, we are aware that they may present some budget-related objections, and let you, the city council, decide what the appropriate fiscal basic support for our seniors via the COA should be. Thank you very much for listening.
Mr. Balleier, I just have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick. And I just want brief answers, because I don't want to engage in dialogue here. Just to clarify, thank you for the handout, by the way. So the last time you guys were allocated a budget amount was 4,500?
Correct.
Fiscal year two, and, and you didn't receive any funding the last cycle?
Two cycles.
Okay. And then this time, you're asking for, what's the total?
6,150.
Okay.
Because we are now engaged in, in social, in regenerating social activity amongst our seniors, which we hadn't done before.
Okay, and then my second question, just real quick. These events that you've planned, I haven't looked at all of them here. Actually, do you even have them here? Okay. No, you don't see them here. But these events, just basic, give me a quick answer. What's the need for these events?
Because the seniors have been holed up in their homes. Their social activities are at a standstill because the Wheels, Meals on Wheels cafeteria has not, hasn't been opened in two and a half years. And the senior club is dead on arrival. As it stands right now, they're not planning on opening up anytime soon, as far as I know. And so we, the Commission on Aging, wants to step into the void to help re, re-socialize our seniors that are holed up to get back into normal activities.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Mr. Balleier, thank you for, you know, bringing back that information. Mr. Heinz, if it's appropriate, the money he asking, can we allocate something from our partner? Or do you want to tell us later on?
And, and, and to be, is part, so the ARPA money he mentioned, could that be part of the 6,000? If, if they, he says something about 4,000 ARPA money. If 4,000 of the 6,000 was ARPA, then really the city's only looking to contribute 2,000 to the budget. Is it, maybe a misunderstanding, his comments are unclearly, but?
I understand. But there are a certain list of priorities that we're taking for the ARPA money. And so I am following that list of priorities. There is another sum of ARPA dollars that we're gonna have to talk about in the future, but I am trying to allocate the plan as we adopted it back in October. I'll, right now, our approach is the baseline amount has been 4,500, and we are agreeable to 4,500. Where we have the difference is that delta between the 4,500 and the 6,100. Given all of the issues that I just presented to you all tonight and that are in the staff report, I am a little reluctant, and I think Councilmember Vandenberg brought this up yesterday, earlier, that we have to look at this whole budget in context. And so while it's only two grand or $2,000, we have some other things to address.
To, to that point, first, it is, I mean legally, Mr. Splendario, it is legal to spend the ARPA funds. And then, yes or no?
On this specifically?
Yes.
I can't answer that right now. I'd have to look at, see what it's specifically for, because it, it's only potentially one category. And I gotta make sure that this would be considered general governmental services under it. So I'd have to look at the final rule for that. So I can't answer it now, but it's possible.
Okay, then, then secondly, I mean, I didn't go to sleep until 1:00 a.m. last night, so I'm not the sharpest cat on, up here. Do I remember correctly that there is a set budget from ARPA funds for nonprofits? And this does not apply to that, correct?
Right, because I don't think the COA is a 501(c)(3).
Right.
Am I, am I off?
And something, something you did consider doing in the future, correct? Okay. Okay, sorry.
I think Director Solis.
Just need to clarify a couple of numbers. You have your numbers mixed up.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. The, we, city managers approved $2,150, which would include a forum, senior resource guide, and cost to enter festivals like the Easter Spring Festival, Heritage, October, Christmas. The 4,000 that we are not in agreement on is gonna be quarterly lunches at $1,600, ice cream socials at $1,200, end-of-the-year dance at $1,200 totaling $4,000. SMUD, we, as Commissioner Balle had stated, we are in the process of signing a MOU with SMUD. The Commission on Aging will be getting $3,500 a year for the next three years to put, they could put towards this, if they chose to. And then back in, when Commissioner Balle talked about the original budget in, in 2018, the majority of that cost was a $3,000 cost for the guides. That's drastically been reduced in this new budget. And I, I was told that Mayor Hure at the time had donated her discretionary funds when council did have those of $1,000 also.
Too bad, we didn't have those still.
I'd ask for weed abatement at that point, then, if you were giving those away.
So to be clear, they asked for 6,000 and tentatively were told that they were, you guys were allowed 2,000 roughly, but not the four.
Correct. We felt that the SMUD grant would, could cover those costs that they wanted to perform.
So my understanding, you said the budget from the previous, so you're saying the budget, the budgets that would possibly be allocated for commissions or committees or whatever, you're saying has went down this time around, is that?
We, we traditionally do not fund commissions and committees.
The beautification doesn't get, I thought they all got some budget of some sorts.
Our Parks and Rec Commission doesn't?
Yeah, but there's a difference between like the Planning Commission and like the Beautification or the Planning Commission and the, I mean, those commissions or committees don't go out and do things in the community. Whereas these are organizations, like the Galt Youth Commission, for example. I know they do fundraising, but they're, and not there, aren't they given a baseline salary of some sort?
They have it for a couple of years because of the budget.
Okay.
So, I mean, the, the example is the Youth Commission. The fact that they went out and, and did fundraising and took care of themselves. That's the example right there.
Yeah, well, I think, and that's, you make a good point, and I just want to say something here. The word example is a good, is a good word. And I think that I understand that, and thank you for clarifying the budget thing on the commissions and committees. But a minute ago, it was stated that we want to prioritize those ARPA funds. Again, I want to remind everybody, within seven months after we decide what to do with ARPA money, there's been not one nickel spent on the community. It's all been internally on things for the city, with the exception of some things like for the pool and some things which are for the community, so I state that. But, I mean, what I gather here is, you know, this city has a big heart. And most of the things that happen in this city come from businesses that, you know, my business gets hit up on a regular basis, can you sponsor this? Can you pay for that? Can you do this? There's businesses in this town that give generously and they know who they are, always give when asked. And these are all mom and pop businesses. These are usually not corporate entities. I, I, I just, I'm disappointed that sometimes we always are always pushing people to, well, go out and ask businesses for money or go out and fundraise. This is the seniors of this community, and this is an important demographic. And these people, in my opinion, have been the hardest hit by the pandemic over the last two years. Mentally, physically, all those reasons. And, and here we are, sitting here talking about, well, you know, we have $6.5 million in ARPA money. And what we've done so far is we've done a lot of things for the city, and we've approved street sweepers at $800,000, and we've approved this and that for this million. This, we've spent, in my estimate, we've spent about $2 million, I think, so far, the ARPA money. $2 million of the ARPA money. And we're sitting here talking about how we can't maybe have our legal go back and look and figure out how we can come up with, you know, $2,000 or $4,000 more money for the seniors. I, I just, I have a problem with that. And I don't know if the council would support me in this, but I would like Mr. Splendario to look into that and see if we can't, see if we could do something specific with this. Because I think this is a unique moment coming out of this pandemic, and I.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
You know, earlier, Mary Magga, she mentioned that 12%, 12% of our population is seniors, and 8% of them, if I remember the number correctly, or something to that effect, are at the edge or below the poverty line. And here we're, I mean, and no offense, I really don't mean any offense. But here we're complaining about $2,000, which is like one thousandths of 1% of our total budget, so that they can. so that they can enjoy some evenings out, having ice cream, one of the, the, having a mother that went, well, it doesn't matter, all that. Having those kind of social interactions are a mental health issue for the elderly. They often get left in their homes by themselves to fend for themselves because they have a twenty thousand dollar income, as she mentioned, spending seventeen thousand dollars of that, as she mentioned, just to secure their home. Now they got three to five thousand dollars to live off for the rest of their year that, you know, I, all I'm going to say is I would fully support the budget, that's all I'll say.
So, let me, let me sum up what I'm hearing. We will ask City Attorney Splendario to check the regs. If you'd like, we can develop allocations for all the committees and commissions using ARPA funds, if that is what you want. However, we'll only be doing, be able to do that on a limited basis.
As seed money that would-
Hang on, and so regarding the commission's budget, we believe that funding those things that are integral to the commission's operation, because the commission is in the 501(c)(3), they're an advisory body to the council. And so we approved all of those things that we thought were appropriate to gather information and advise the council on issues affecting the seniors. That's what we've approved. And Director Solis, can you read that list again of what we've approved?
It's described as a forum at six hundred dollars, a senior resource guide at twelve fifty, and a hundred dollars for winter festival, a hundred dollars for spring festival, and a hundred dollars for October festivals. That's to register to go in to provide information on the Commission on Aging.
A hundred dollars?
That's, this is their budget that they asked for.
So, so, the things that we've approved, and I'm not weighing in on your comments, I understand. I'm just letting you know why we approved what we approved, because we approved what we approved based on what I see in the Galt Municipal Code as what the commission's duty is, and that's an advisory committee to the council. So if you want to now treat it more as a nonprofit ancillary to the city, then we should probably think about revisiting the Galt Municipal Code and redefining that committee and that particular commission, and maybe you should look at all the other committees and commissions, because you're probably going to hear from them as well. Outside of the Planning Commission, of course. But again, I have no issue with what you've said. All I'm saying is, this is why we've justified what we've had, what we've justified. I am not weighing in on any opinions. I am aware that our seniors have been hit hard by this, Bob has made that abundantly clear to me. So, we have money in the ARPA funds, I think it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for nonprofits, and I'm hoping some of those are senior-focused. And so, yes, we're, I'm just explaining to you why I approved what I approved. However, it is council's ultimate decision, and so we'll be happy to submit the entire budget to you.
I have a quick question.
Mayor?
Yeah, oh, yes.
So, I, and I appreciate Bob, everything you do, and, and the whole committee. You guys are probably one of the most active out at festivals and stuff. I just have a question, and I don't necessarily, I don't want to, I don't want this to sound like I'm questioning the amount, I'm just trying to get here, get somewhere. Of the four thousand dollars, which are quarterly luncheons, ice cream, socials, things like that, dances, where, where would you be hosting those at?
At the Shabbat Center.
Okay, of that four thousand dollars, are you paying for rent at the Shabbat? Oh, okay.
That would just be base money, whatever we can negotiate with businesses to help us raise funds for it or?
Okay, all right, I, I just thought maybe we could cut off six hundred and fifty dollars per event, and we'd be real close, but, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Lozano, I inform the commission that, I'm sorry, councilman, sorry, we're talking about commissions, I apologize. I advise the, the commission that the city would be happy to do an in-kind with the use of the halls or a park, and we would be happy to, to help them set up for these events as an in-kind type of contribution from the city. And again, with the thirty-five hundred dollars from SMUD, we felt that that would cover the majority of their-
Let me ask this other question. The thirty-five hundred dollars, can we use that for something else in the city? Or does it have to be used by?
That is only for the Commission on Aging.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So what was the forty-five hundred that they got? Can you revisit that, please, in 2018 and 19, they got forty-five hundred allocated, what?
The majority was the three thousand dollars for the Resource Guide, underwriters, survey to Galt seniors, participation in other programs. They did have a thousand dollar budget, but I don't remember this happening for art exhibit, ice cream socials, concerts, winter dance, and other activities, but I, I don't recall that happening.
So where did the forty, yeah, I don't, so where did the forty-five come from, though?
So, I, I believe it was allocated through the budget process, and the main reason was for the Resource Guide, and then the discretionary funds were added to it, from what I was told by, I had staff look into it.
So there is a precedent of giving a commission or committee some funding? I'm just, I'm just saying.
Through discretionary funds and for the specific of the calendar, the Resource Guide.
I mean, I want to remind, so in our budget process, and I noticed before you came on Lorenzo, but we used to have discretionary funds for the council, and, you know, the optics was, when we're making massive budget cuts at the time, that we shouldn't keep something like a, you know, a discretionary fund because it just looked bad, right? Although, those funds were always historically given to great causes in the community, they were never used by the council members for themselves, never have I seen that. I mean, if we had those still, it would be great, because we could then personally take our, our passions in the community, and we can make those dollars make some impact, but unfortunately, we don't have those. But I- Do you recall how much those were? There's like three thousand apiece, I think?
At the very end, it went down to a thousand.
Okay, was it one point three, and then it went down, yeah. What I would like to see, and just again, what I would like to see is, I know we have, we've already, we've kind of come up with a list of what we're going to do with ARPA funds, and we have the hundred fifty for nonprofits, and we have the, for the businesses and all such, but I know there's two, two million eighty thousand dollars unallocated. I mean, I'm just wondering if we couldn't maybe, what would a small number look like as a base budget for commissions and committees? And I know some of the, you know, like the Planning Commission, they don't really, I mean, what are they, they're not going to go out and put on events, you're not going to see the, the, you know, the Parks and Rec, but you're going to see like the Youth Commission, and the Beautification Commission, and the Commission on Aging. These are organizations, or these are commissions that do do things in the community and would like to actually further do things. I'm just wondering if we could look at the commissions and committees and figure out, if we could maybe come up with some seed money from the ARPA money as a baseline budget. Maybe it's two thousand dollars per commission or three thousand, that they have a baseline, and they can fundraise and build on that. But I don't think we'd be talking about a lot of money if we did something like that, so I would like to see something like that explored.
Understood, so that's a policy direction that we'll explore, okay.
Is that something that we would?
All right, great, great. I'll also look into your discretionary funds as well.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And, and I just want to go on record saying that I personally, as one council member, don't have an interest in discretionary funds.
Okay.
But I'll do what the will of the council is.
Understood, and I just wanted to say to Bob, thank you. We're both in the same place. We've just got different, different, different approaches, but we're both in the same place, so. You got it, you got it, so.
Can I just make one comment regarding Meals on Wheels and seniors?
Yes, sir.
So we've, we continue to ask Meals on Wheels to start up again in-person. They're, we're being told that their funders for the program do not want in-person at this point, but once they agree to it, we'll, we'll be going back to in-person, I don't know when that will be.
Could I ask somebody in the audience, she's indicating she wants to say something?
Okay, and then-
I didn't hear you, what was that?
It was September, so she was told today it's going to be September.
And the senior, the Galt Club, Senior Club, said they didn't want to return until Meals on Wheels had returned, but they are, they are both available to come back at any time. You know, it's not the city that's holding them away.
Yeah, and by the way, Meals on Wheels is a great program. I, pleasure going with Andrea and one of her constituents, and to visit these people that literally hadn't been out of their houses, and like, I mean, it was, it was heavy, it was heavy moments to see some of these people, they were just, to, to see someone and just, yeah, it was awesome, so, thanks for those programs.
We have another public comment?
Yes.
Andrea Johnson?
Okay, hello.
State your name.
Andrea Johnson. I am with the Commission on Aging and Meals on Wheels. I am here today to talk to you guys about my passion. I could have come up here with a big list, but I'm going to speak from my heart. First of all, let's talk about social interaction with the seniors. How many of you, other than Mr. Farmer, has come on a ride-along with me to see the seniors? Anybody? No? Okay. Well, if you would like to, I really would like you guys to come, one by one, and ride along with me and see these people, to see the people who haven't left their house in two years, and really see how depressed, lonely they are. Let's talk about mental health in them. Do you know how many seniors, you know, we could talk about quality of life, what their quality of life is right now, because they don't have social interaction, their children have died off, they can't leave their house, maybe they don't have transportation? I know most of you know, when COVID hit, we had teamed up, I had teamed up with the school district, personally, and paid for meals to be delivered to these seniors for three to four months in the summer. And that was my own fundraising. Also, my own fundraising would be the senior resource guides that me and my family had paid for this year because we only had a hundred dollars in our budget. So, there is fundraising going on, and so we are excited to team up with SMUD and Cal Waste, but we shouldn't rely on those fundraising as a staple. We should build on those fundraising and keep it up. Did you guys know what the Senior Club plays for at their bingo, when they had bingo? Any guesses? That's right, they played for canned food, toilet paper, Kleenexes, things that we all can go out and buy, but they can't, because they're on a fixed income. So, I'm sorry if I get passionate about maybe an ice cream social, that sounds so trivial, but these people, these people in our community who helped raise us and make our city, our town, what it is, they need our help right now. And that's what I'm doing, is I'm standing here begging, if that's what it takes, to let them have some dinner and dances, and maybe play bingo without toilet paper, canned foods, paper towels. Wouldn't that be nice, if they could play for something other than something they need, something they want? Meals on Wheels is estimated to come back in September. That's conservative because of the whole COVID thing. They've been saying they were coming back for about a year now, and they haven't. Senior Club won't come back until Meals on Wheels come back. So what are we, as citizens of this town, going to give back to our seniors? And I'm sorry if we're asking for money, and I would like to see the list also for the ARPA requirements, because I know mental health and social interaction for these seniors who are withering away right now could really use us. So I want us all, not only as council members, our city manager, our public, I want you guys to stop and think, and really think about our seniors and what we can do to make, even holding a door open. I know that sounds like petty, and some of them might be a little cranky, but I think they deserve it, and please come along, ride along with me. You guys would see a whole different side of everything if you could.
I would love to come along with you, Andrea. Also, never feel bad about doing the right thing, and that's exactly what you're doing. You should be proud of it, and stand there proudly doing it every single time. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions you guys have for me? Anything? I would love for you to come. Mister, I would love for you to come, I know you don't live in our community, but I think it would be a really great thing for you to ride along and see some of the seniors in our community, so you could see where maybe me and Bob and the Commission on Aging's passion comes, comes from, and why it's so important for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. If, if she wants to speak, could someone be so kind as to, do we need to do a speaker sheet?
I would like to do a testimonial, please.
Go ahead, come on up to the thing and state your name for the record, please. Can you come up to the-
I will fill this out, but I want to make-
It's all right, just come up to the microphone, you don't need to fill it out. Okay, there you go, there you go, thank you, thank you, Armando.
Thank you. I, for one, would like to make a testimonial. I'm going to qualify it with two things first. Yes, I'm a Galt senior, yes, I'm a property owner, I'm seventy-six years old, I've been retired since 2012. I represent who I can, I represent the California State retirees for Sacramento and Yellow County. When I was a state worker, I was a job steward, a president for various, as well. But I'm going to tell you something, and it's not going to be easy. I took the same amount of money that I would spend for a month, a month and a half's groceries, and nothing fancy, just plain, the same amount may last me two weeks. And that's no lie. I try to keep everything local here in Galt, but, again, getting around sometimes is a problem, because I took a fall, unfortunately, a lot of people do. I'm lucky I exercise enough, I haven't broken anything, but I am on a walker. So as a result, for me to go into stores sometimes is a pain in the unia. So the delivery charges they charge are ridiculous, especially when you can't get most of your order. I try to keep it in, like I said, local. I made an order, ninety percent of it, they couldn't, they couldn't fathom it, they couldn't do it. Whether they were out of it for delivery purposes or whatever, I still had to pay that delivery amount and then go pay it to somebody else all over again. So who's right and who's wrong? And I help seniors here in Galt as best I can, but, from what I heard earlier, there was a few things that I want to add, and I don't know, from what you've discussed, if you're going to have a survey on those things or not. From a program standpoint and a community standpoint, I have a lot of suggestions that being from the Bronx, New York have worked, and one I will mention. I'm one of the originals from PAL, Police Athletic League in the Bronx, New York, where the police worked with the children, and let's face it, the children are the future. Me, I could be gone tomorrow, so could somebody else. But if you want Galt to grow, you got to start at the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, I just wanted to tell you, I once did an audit in the Bronx with Zero Bakery, so I just thought I'd let you know, I've been to the Bronx. I am, over here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What bakery?
Uh, Zero Bakery.
I was about to want to ask Nelson Avery in the Bronx where they taught us how to make bagels.
There you go, that's the only place they make them. Yeah, I get it.
Do we have any other public comment?
When you grow up, baby, and you become a senior, we'll talk.
Do we have any additional public comment?
No.
Okay, all right. Continue on with the, where are we at in the, I lost my, I forgot where we're at with our-
Lose your place, mayor?
Yeah. So we finished the, the budget presentation, we heard all public comment, we have no further public comment, it looks like. So, again, this was just a presentation, so, continue this on May seventeenth with the other funds, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so we can go ahead and move on to item two from the City Manager's Office, which is the appropriation of funding for six controlled fielding, field lighting control systems and replacement of five playground structures.
Right, so, we are looking to, again, continue the council's allocation plan for ARPA. uh, which is on page two of four. Um, so far, we have done one-time payments to the essential workers in the city, which were part of the labor negotiations from last year. Uh, the Council also adopted a resolution appropriating five hundred and six thousand for pool repairs. I believe that is for replastering and pool heater replacement. And so we hope to get those things done, um, and back in front of Council here pretty soon. Again, those are, that's a community-oriented project. Um, we are also allocated funds of three hundred thousand dollars to CCSD uh, to support our fire services currently being provided here in the city. Uh, we're currently deliberating on a proposed ARPA funding, funded litter abatement worker, which should also be part of the May seventeenth agenda. Um, we are also rolling out the Small Business and Nonprofits Program. Um, I believe the Small Business is coming on May seventeenth. I'll have to check with Direct, or, um, Amy Mendez regarding the nonprofits, but I think that's coming too. On page two of four, you see a chart of the allocations thus far and the allocations remaining. There is one point three million for Small Business Assistance. There is a hundred and fifty thousand for Nonprofits Program. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, we have a little over two million dollars of dollars yet to be allocated. I will be coming back to the Council, Council to allocate those dollars probably when the new year starts, um, or the new fiscal year starts. And so tonight, we have two recommended actions. It's a seventy-five thousand dollar uh, appropriation to purchase a Control Link Field Lighting Control System, and Director Solis will describe that. And we're also looking for an appropriation of six hundred thousand dollars to replace five community playground structures.
Tina, can you pull up the presentation? Good evening again, Mayor and City, or Vice Mayor and City Council. Um, I'm just going to go over really quickly what exactly Control Link is and why we need it. Go ahead, next. So, uh, Control Link is provided by Musco Lighting. We currently have this, uh, system installed at Walker Park for the three fields and at Harvey Park. Next slide, Lorenzo. So what Control Link does is we can designate field representatives, like from G Y B, County Line Use Soccer, um, any group. We'll give them authority to schedule their own lights. And so that takes time away, um, allows my staff not to have to do that. Uh, they're responsible for each one of their times. Next, Lorenzo. It also gives us a report on, it monitors our equipment, energy use. So there's a lot of information that it provides to us. And then what it does, it'll, it'll do an, an accurate billing for the month that we can bill directly to these organizations for the light, uh, cost. So it's less time for my staff to, to continue to do this. Right now, when we're doing it manually, we have to keep, uh, track manually and then do a bill. This just prints a report. So the, there is that we want to do, I kind of want to give you a, an example of how far, so one, the parks worker has to drive to the location. This is Greer Basin. And this is the, the worst example of it. He has to get out of the truck, he or she, walk that path to where that switch is. I have no idea why they put that switch there instead of near the front. Walk all the way back. It's point two nine miles to do that. So you're talking, he's spending ten, fifteen minutes to get to and from, to turn off the lights. He has to do it twice. Um, and then he has to also drive there. So he's leaving what, what he's doing assigned to drive to that location. Adding Control Link to this location stops that. Go ahead. So the next place is Veterans, one point four miles. Again, I don't know why they put all these switches where they put them versus next to the entrances. Uh, again, has to drive to the location, flick it on manually. Go ahead, Lorenzo. Community Park, this is the shortest one, one point two. Um, again, drive to the location. And these are things that, instead of having to leave what they're doing, they can continue to do versus leaving to turn these on. And then the last one is a sports complex. There's three fields there, one point six from where they would have to park. This is just an example of the time savings that we would have for staff to be doing other things other than driving from location to location and turning on and off lights. So, do you have any questions on the Control Link? Uh, it's app-based. You can do it on your, uh, phone. It's, it's really easy, and if you forget, uh, you can call them and they turn it off, turn it on if you don't do it within that fifteen minutes.
I just have a, a comment. I've, I've used, um, both systems in, um, as a youth sports league person. And, and I found one of the other advantages that I don't think you covered was, um, we were always in dispute with when, how much time our team used or league used the lights. And this way, um, with this system, I was able to control, uh, when the lights were on and off. And so I knew at the end of the month, without the report, what, uh, the billing cycle was going to look like. It also helped, um, reduce the amount of energy being used, right? Because if, if a light was on, um, and wasn't being used, there was no one there really to control it until somebody gets there, wa, gets out of the vehicle and locks and turns it off. So I think there's some, some advantage in terms of, uh, the usage, uh, but also, uh, the billing.
It was a big game changer for Harvey. We saw revenue increase tremendously. And then also the, the organizations become really conscious of what they're spending because they actually see it. It, it's there. They're scheduling it. So again, it, it's great information for both sides, for us and them.
Uh, so the, this is, the appropriation amount in the staff report is for, uh, six, six controlled lighting systems?
Correct.
So is that six parks or is it?
Uh, six actual light standards. So like, the complex has three. You'd put one on each one of those.
Okay. This doesn't, uh, this isn't going to any, by any way, never mind. I was going to make a joke about the, the height of the lights at the softball complex. I was going to ask if there's any way, go on. It's late.
Just duck when you're playing. It'll seem higher that way. Uh, okay, so the next, um, uh, next, uh, ARPA request would be for, uh, five playground replacements. So I'm going to go again through this real quick. Ashboro Tot Lot, that's in, uh, the West Side L and L. It's a, it's a pocket park, so most of you probably don't even know it exists. And the cost will be, since I don't have my glasses...
Sixty-five thousand.
Okay, sixty-five thousand dollars. Sorry, I'm going to become a senior soon and will need the Resource Center. All right.
We got you.
And this is going to be a turnkey operation. They're going to come in, demo. Uh, we're going to get rid of all the sand that we have in our, our parks. We're going to replace it with engineered wood fiber, and they're going to give it to us ready to go. So this isn't anything that we'll have to prep for, do for. This is the, the price to actually just get it done. Next, Lorenzo. So the next, uh, park that was identified was Canyon Creek Park. That's in the Northeast L and L. And that is a cost of, uh,
One hundred and seventy-seven. All right, good.
One seventy-six. Next is, uh, Greer. That's on the West Side L and L. And then that is, uh, a total cost of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And if you see, there, there's a line item in there for grant funding we received, and it's been approved for grant funding through CPRS. So all we have to do is appropriate the money. Uh, and we get those grants of totaling two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, I believe it is. Uh, next one is Community Park. We, I believe, two years ago, we redid the large, uh, the twelve, the five to twelve-year-old playground. Uh, this is for the, for the smaller playground, and it is going to be matching the same one that's there. So it's a baseball theme, red, white, and blue. Um, the one that's currently there, a lot of it's made out of wood. And keep in mind, a lot of these parks that we're replacing, the playgrounds, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-nine, when they were built, so standards have changed. Go ahead, Lorenzo. Uh, Lake Canyon Park, Northeast L and L. Uh, it's a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, uh, this next slide is just a overview of each one of the projects. And, um, you can see where the grant is two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Cost to the city through ARPA, whose request is five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So we're asking, uh, for a total of six hundred thousand through ARPA, uh, just to give us, in case something happens, we need to replace something else. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Couple of questions for you, Armando. So this, this amount of the ARPA is out of the, um, original amount that we had talked about to set aside for, I mean, right? It's on the-
Yes, this is part of it, yes.
Page two of four for folks watching.
Okay. Um, what's the life expectancy of these, um, structures? Do they give you any, the manufacturer?
So, it really depends. A lot of our problem is going to be vandalism. Um, you know, people jumping on them, unappropriating-
Just regular use.
I would hope to get fifteen to twenty good years out of that. And, and in, in a lot of these parks, if we, if we were able to get, uh, replacement pieces, we'd be happy to do that and be a lot cheaper. Unfortunately, they're, they're kind of doing this every ten to fifteen years. They're changing the model and changing codes. So we can't get the parts. That's one of the reasons that we've removed slides, walled off sections, um, you know, just trying to keep it going. And, and we really Band-Aid a lot of these.
Right. Well, as Mr. Vandenberg was telling before the meeting, when we sat first down, he said, uh, we're in the wrong business. We need to be in a playground construction business. Um, we're way, we're way past metal slides and merry-go-rounds like I grew up with. Um, but you know, but in honest, on, and all honestly, I mean, these, these duller figures, you just like, you know, you just don't realize what things cost. But again, you know, we've specified ARPA money for certain things. I think, I've been very clear, and I think this Council has, that we want to see community, money spent in the community to help the community, things like the pool, uh, things like, uh, you know, the, uh, the other things we've bought that will directly affect, well, this is one of them. This is for kids, this is for our families. I mean, these, I've seen some of these parks and they're in desperate need of this stuff. So I think we have the money. We have it from ARPA. Um, it's a chance for us to use it. I mean, we can sit here and go back and forth about nickel and diamond on the money, but, I mean, we've, we've earmarked that money for it, so I, I support it. I don't really have any questions beyond that.
I, I just have a comment real quick. Um, I am so excited to see engineered wood fiber come into our playgrounds. Um, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's fire retardant and it's safer for kids to fall on than sand, believe it or not. And, uh, so it's, it's nice to have our parks come up to speed with that, that new technology. And, uh, and also, since we're talking about ARPA, I still want to see, uh, nonprofits and small businesses, uh, program. And I know that's coming. Um, but, uh, I just thought I'd put a plug in for it again.
Uh, getting rid of the sand gets rid of a big, uh, kitty litter box also, so.
Cats don't like engineered wood?
Not, not as much as the sand.
Excellent. So just, just for, uh, the grants are guaranteed as long as we approve?
Yes.
And so that's the total, just so for everybody knows, it's a total seventy, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. That's, that's a tidy sum. We definitely are in the wrong business. Uh, but I, I'm really happy to see this for the citizens. Thank you. Oh, and you, we talked briefly. Uh, you mentioned that, as far as pricing goes, uh, you mentioned something about piggybacking on the state, so it's, it's, this is as good as it gets, unfortunately.
Yes, uh, we won't be required to go out to bid. This is a state, uh, piggyback contract that we'll be, uh, pricing this on, or what it was priced on.
And if I may, um, I'd like to bring to the Council attention, Council's attention at the bottom of page three of four. We have applied for a grant to support these playground structures from Supervisor Don Natoli, um, to actually get access to some of the county dollars. I believe we've applied for four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. So we may be coming back here if we're successful, um, with letting you know that we don't really need the whole six hundred thousand for this. We only need a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. So we will definitely let you know, and we will, of course, adjust the ARPA schedule. But for those folks, um, uh, watching at home, I just wanted you to know that we have over a million dollars going into community projects and projects that benefit the community, uh, directly thus far.
So with that said, Steph's, Staff's asking, uh, you to adopt a resolution authorizing the appropriation of seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of six Control Link Field Lighting Control Systems and two, uh, authorizing an appropriation of six hundred thousand for the replacement of five, uh, playground structures.
So moved.
Uh, before we make a motion, I just-
Oh, I didn't. And he wasn't, I have to call for the motion, yeah.
I, I just wanted to let you know what our recommendation was. That's what we're-
Right.
And I, I would like to make a comment. Uh, thank you for earlier, you know, you, clarification on one of the park, I have it. Thank you for that. And I believe the way we have a conversation, these, the five parks, they really need to replace these structures, right?
Correct. These were based on needs, not, uh, you know, locations. The, these were the top five parks that we needed to replace. And I, uh, off of memory, I remember citizens coming and to Councils specifically about some of these parks that, uh, we're, we're going to be replacing.
This five parks, how many other, just, you know, give me a, you can just give me a ballpark number, but how many other parks out of our twenty-one parks have playground structures besides these five?
I want to say close to fifteen of our total parks.
And some of those may have been, uh, like I know Lions Park, even though it seems really old, it's got like that soft turf. So clearly, at that point in time, that one's been done at some point. So the, the, so other parks, you, you've put these in priority, the ones that are desperately need to be replaced, that are, that are the highest priority. It's not about the, how, how much the park's used. These are prioritized by the, the life of the, you know, how bad it is, how much it needs repair, so on, right?
Correct.
What's the timeline on getting these? Should we approve this?
I'll place the order tomorrow and get an ETA and provide that to you at the next Council meeting.
Could they possibly, some of these be done by the summer or in the summer?
I'm really hoping they would be. Again, shipping issues. Who, who knows with those type of things? We just needed to allocate that money before we lost the grant, that's all.
Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. Solis before I go to public comment? All right, thank you, Mr. Solis. Appreciate it. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Uh, if you would like to speak, you have to fill out a speaker sheet. Just come to the thing. Yes, we'll, we'll need a speaker sheet from you. Frank, is that all right? Require speaker sheets every time? Okay. I went a little off protocol tonight, I'm sorry. I'm getting the eye from the city attorney when I don't get speaker sheets, so I'm sorry.
Okay, Andrea Johnson.
I'm going to get put on a timeout. Go ahead.
Um, two questions. One is, um, how many of those parks will be handicap accessible?
I think that's a question you can talk to Director Solis offline.
Okay, and, okay, then I'll just go offline and ask him because I don't think you guys-
Right.
I need to go home. Okay. Do you want to fill this out still? Okay.
Uh, please, yeah, if you don't mind, fill it out and just leave it before you go, just so we have record of, yeah, thank you. Any further public comment? Okay. All right, well, with that, um, I'll be looking for, looking for a motion to adopt a resolution for, number one, authorizing appropriation of seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of six Control Link Field Lighting Control System. And number two, authorizing an appropriation of six hundred thousand dollars for replacement of five playground structures. So moved.
Second?
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg and seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Uh, resolution adopted five zero. All right, moving on to our next item from the Parks and Recreation Department again. Subject is going to be the City of Galt Special Event Sponsorship Application Overview, Fiscal Year Twenty-two, Twenty-three. Mr. Solis?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to show proof of life of Jackie Garcia, if she is still with the City of Galt, and she will be providing this presentation.
Good evening. Happy to be here.
Good to have you back.
Thanks. Um, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Today, I'm happy to share with the Special Event Sponsorship Program regarding the applications that we received for the Fiscal Year Twenty-two, Twenty-three. We can go to the next slide. This is just a recap on what our sponsorship policy goals and objectives are. It's one, to, um, make this place desirable to live, visit, and do business, promote the City of Galt as a visitor destination, and bring tourism and revenue to the city, enhance the quality of life and well-being, being, advance the city's commitment to and pride in being a multicultural community, encourage the development of neighborhood identity and pride. Encourage the development of neighborhood identity and pride. Promote cultural and artistic awareness, align, and again, it aligns with the City of Galt mission statement and our strategic plan. Next slide. So the first application that we received was Farm to Fork Dinner, which is on the Fourth Street Promenade on September seventeenth. This is a ticketed event, expecting three hundred attendees. The city hard cost will be five hundred and eighty dollars, which would include the police security, and there is no soft cost to this event. Uh, the next one is Galt High Alumni, their all-class reunion for Littleton Community Center on October first, expecting two hundred. The hard cost would be five hundred and twenty, which is the private security service. And the city's soft cost is the facility rental at six hundred and fifty dollars. The next one is Liberty Ranch, um, the Homecoming Parade. It's a street closure on October fourteenth, which is a free community event with expected attendance of a hundred and fifty. The hard cost is one thousand one twenty, which is police officer overtime and public works, which has the breakdown of what the equal of that one thousand one twenty. And the soft class cost includes on-duty police and caps at seven hundred and eighty dollars. LaHeim Trick or Treat on Fourth Street. This is a street closure on October twenty-ninth, a free community event, expecting five hundred. This is hard cost of four thousand and fifty, and this is public work street closure cost. The Galt Chamber did submit three event applications. The first two are Home and Auto Show at Littleton Community Center, October ninth. It's a community event, expecting three hundred. There is no hard cost and the soft cost is six fifty. The Bridle and Event Showcase at Littleton, March fifth, three hundred people and no hard cost with uh, soft cost being six fifty of the rental facility. The Galt Chamber also Wine Beer and Food at Littleton Center, February third, a community ticketed event, expecting four hundred. Hard cost is four eighty for police, private security services, I'm sorry, and uh, rental cost is six fifty. Uh, Galt Joint Union High Schools, every fifteen minutes, a city's street closure. They don't have the date yet, but it's spring of twenty-twenty-three. A free community event and the hard cost is nineteen hundred, which is public work street closure and police officer overtime and no soft cost. This is a recap of all eight applications, uh, including totaling of the hard cost at eighty, eight thousand six hundred and fifty and soft cost is three thousand three hundred and eighty. The total would be twelve thousand thirty of what we're asking for sponsorship. So we brought to you again, just a recap of what we're asking for and we're looking for direction on, um, to us on the approval of the events monetary amounts or in-kind contributions. Any questions?
Ms. Garcia, the twelve thousand, do you recall, uh, or maybe Armando can remember, typically each year, it's quite a bit. I mean, we have more events, we have some events that are not going this year, they haven't come to money. So, because we've given like, I mean, before it was like fifteen thousand one year and maybe even higher than that, right? So this is actually well below.
Vet stock was one, um, that is not returning this year. They'll be coming back next year, but they're waiting until things die down.
Okay. All right, that, that's the only question I had. Yeah, any of the council have a question for Mr. Garcia, Ms. Garcia or Mr. Solis? Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Look forward to seeing all these events and participating and admitting as we can. All right, well with that, uh.
Excuse me, Mayor, just want to make sure, did, did you need a motion or did you get? This is the final time you're going to be coming to council on this, right?
Correct. We're, we are looking for city council to review the special event requests for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and provide direction awarding the approval of the events monetary amounts and or in-kind uh, contributions.
Yeah, so we're looking, provide direction. So do we need a motion?
I think on this, they're really looking for a motion, just to award as, as presented by staff, right?
They.
I mean, that's, that would be, that would probably be the cleanest and clearest.
This direction would mean bringing something back potentially in future.
I don't, I don't think they're going to bring something back unless council asks them to, so.
This will be put into the budget and they will approve the budget at that point.
Okay, so we have, first of all, I got to ask for a public comment. Do we have any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay. Um, so you just need a consensus from us then?
Since it's in the budget.
Should I ask, is there any objection or concerns for this coming back? No, okay. There you go. All right, moving on to item four. Subject gives me the designation of authorized official to execute State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Grants and Local Services Grant Documents and Applications. Mr. Solis again.
So this, this uh, item is just a cleanup matter. We've received a seven hundred thousand dollar grant uh, through uh, Jim Cooper's office. And uh, we failed to provide a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to sign contracts. So what this does is uh, you will authorize him as the signee for any contracts and to submit to, uh, towards that grant. And so what we're asking you to do is adopt a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to execute and submit uh, periodic grant documents, applications and agreements on behalf of the City of Galt for all State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Grants and Local Services for Walker Park for which the city is eligible.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Solis on this item? Nope, thank you, sir. All right, with that, I'll be looking for, uh, actually, I'm sorry. Do you have any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, with that, we'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute and submit periodic grant documents, applications and agreements on behalf of the City of Galt for all State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Grants and Local Services for Walker Park for which the city is eligible.
I'm moved.
Moved by Councilman Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Papino. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Resolution approved five zero. Um, and.
Uh, you want to be like by name?
All right. Moving on to our number, letter I, number I. Communication. Do we have any communication this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Item J, city clerk's report.
Nothing.
All right. Item K, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Nothing to report from the city manager, Director Solis, uh, many comments. And uh, the rest of the directors will be in shortly. Yes, the comment I have is that uh, we've uh, just lost a full-time Parks and Recreation Maintenance Person. Uh, he's taken a job um, somewhere else for a little bit more money. And um, so we'll be uh, asking for applications for that. And um, and I provided all the information um, on the other items regarding the weed and um, the special events person.
Thank you, sir.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Let's go with Chief Kalanowski.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Okay. I'm smiling now, right? So that's good. Hey, um, a couple things. First of all, uh, I want to circle back to something that Mayor Farmer said. Yes, absolutely, one hundred percent. The city council supported the PD for all our requests and we do appreciate that. So I don't want that to go unnoticed because I think it starts to feel like that may not be the case. I think we were just talking about upcoming, upcoming issues that are perceived. So I do want, I don't want to alienate any of my relationships with any of you feeling that we don't feel that way. And the staff does feel that way. So on their behalf, I want you to know that. The second thing is, um, the last couple days, last Thursday, uh, yesterday, or Sunday with the candlelight vigil and then yesterday with the secondary enrollment at the state level. Some of you were able to make it um, up, including the city manager to support our staff and the Graywall family, and that was very much appreciated, appreciated. There's a contingent of us next week going to um, DC to do the final enrollment at the federal level. So we'll be off-site handling that. And um, so that'll be our sort of next step on our journey for honoring Harmon. Um, and then beyond that will be the first annual um, uh, ceremony that we'll have here at the monument, which will be August twenty-sixth. So um, that's our pattern going forward with that. Uh, beyond that, we are still running our sergeant's testing, which uh, will be occurring formally at the end of May. And so we expect to have uh, three promotions to occur off that list in coming months. And so we'll be moving forward on that and we're excited to announce uh, promotions. And then ultimately, all those promotions would have been within the ranks of the organization. So that's very important. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Chief Kalanowski, I have something for you here.
Oh, yes.
I'm gonna just give this to you now because this is from the gentleman in Ireland.
Oh, yes.
So that was a thing he brought back for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you. Good night.
Finance Director Matt Boring.
Good evening. I don't have any other comments tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Nothing further tonight. Have a great night.
Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Good evening. Just briefly wanted to let everybody know, um, I shared on our social media, it's also on our website. The Shine Awards for SMUD have been announced and that'll be opening applications um, on June first. So those are um, grants for area nonprofits that are within SMUD's um, area that are going to be um, between ten thousand and one hundred thousand dollars. So any local nonprofits that are interested, information will be on our website, on the front page. We also have it on social media. So encourage any of the local nonprofits who are interested um, to view their outreach sessions they have um, here coming up, I think within the next couple of weeks, there's three of them in May. So it's a great way to um, get folks in the community involved. I know that um, there's been a lot of requests um, for the ARPA funds for nonprofit. We'll have that coming within the next couple of weeks for council. But um, this is just another means of uh, collecting some funds for some projects in the community.
Good to hear. Thank you. Hurry up and get Bob back in here.
I hear you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Director Mike Selling.
Yeah, good evening and council. I just wanted to express appreciation. Earlier today, attended the Celebration of Life for Bill Forrest, uh, our engineer who unfortunately passed away about a month ago now. And uh, several of the staff and, and council members were able to attend as well and, and just appreciated the uh, the uh, the support in that. Uh, it was a great uh, service and uh, we're also um, planning, I, I'd sent an email around to the city staff, but unfortunately, apparently it didn't include everyone, so I wanted to make sure I extended the invitation to all the council uh, that tomorrow about one-thirty, uh, we've got a tree planting that we're going to do in front of the uh, Public Works uh, Community Development Building. So the family uh, was really excited about that and, and so we'll have them there, uh, just kind of a brief informal thing, but um, uh, definitely something just to continue to honor uh, his memory, so. Uh, the other thing I wanted to note is uh, on Saturday, I know I don't want to take Armando's thunder, but um, we will be running the transit, the Free Transit Shuttle again for the Saturday Market event. And uh, I think we've got some uh, enhanced signage to just help folks know what the schedule is so they can hopefully plan their, their, you know, coming and going on it so they don't have to wait too long. And, and just to drive home the point that it is free and there is no charge for it. So, so we'll have some, uh, some better signage this time and uh, hopefully we will continue a uh, well-attended uh, event. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Director Selling. Um, let's uh, let's go back to Director Solis.
I apologize. I had forgotten to mention the Saturday Market. Uh, I know, I know. Sitting around doing nothing.
I've been looking forward to it.
We're uh, the, this uh, this month's uh, uh, market will feature Sink of the Mile theme. Uh, we're going to be having a car show, uh, dancing horses, uh, through Compadre's Market, uh, a band. And then um, our regular vendors, uh, we have up to fifty vendors at this time. So we um, we're starting to grow and um, hopefully we'll continue that.
Extra restrooms?
I didn't know we needed extra restrooms from the last time, from the first time. I know you needed them from the event that happened two weeks ago.
Yeah, that, that's right. There was a lack of them at the one event. I think somebody made a mention, it's like, well, if we're going to have margaritas, maybe we need more restrooms. It was the sink that, it was the trash can that was, that's what it was, not, not, yeah.
I, I think we were okay with the restrooms on our back.
Okay, right. Sorry for that. Yeah, clarify.
Okay, thank you, Director.
I have a question, just real quick. Uh, do you know off the top of your head if there's an over and under for making money for vendors? Fifties making, sixties making money?
I, from talking to Jackie, the majority of the vendors made money.
No, I meant the city.
For the city?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I do not have that in front of me.
That's okay, thank you. No, that was just off, off the hips.
Yeah, that is interesting though. I'd like, maybe in the future we could calculate maybe what, where that break even, because I know this, obviously we projected this, there's a, there's going to be a losing cost, you know, you know, but over, yeah. So I'm just curious where would the break even point would be, something to strive for, so. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
All right, uh, let's go with City Clerk Tina Hubert.
Nothing.
All right. City Attorney Frank Splendario.
Nothing for me.
All right. And I just wanted to repeat that our accounting manager Cindy Tao has submitted her resignation. Um, huge blow to our finance function. Um, she was the one that got us through the last uh, annual financial report, um, with minimal, I mean, one finding. Um, so it was yeoman's work and she did that, you know, with not a whole lot of staffing and a lot of overtime. We're going to miss her fire, her energy, her intellect, and um, we wish her well. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item L, comments by city council members, future agenda items. Start with our Vice Mayor. Mr. Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity to speak. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank your staff. Give us a report of their hard work during the budget briefing. I also like to thank you all the public comment. Officer Little, his comment is very important. To me, safety is always first on my list. And Scott Robinson, thank you, Scott Robinson, gave us a few uh, on the comment. Mary Mega, Philip Johnson, from the Aging Commission, Paul Balyard and Andrea Johnson. And I also like to thank you, Valley Oak Newspaper. They are here all time in this chamber. I did attend a, a couple events. I attended Belle Forest Celebration Life earlier today. It was a great event. We had so many that knew him, joining and sharing stories of their memories of Belle. We will miss him and his family is in my prayers. I also attended yesterday California Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony in Sacramento. I believe thirty-six fallen officers were formerly enrolled into the monument. Our very own fallen hero, Herminar Singharawal, was one of the honorees. His family and friends and all the police department and Mr. Heinz and council member, we joined them. It was the first time the event took place since pandemic started. I was a beautiful, it was a beautiful tribute to the support and honor those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Lastly, I would like to send the message from Herminar family yesterday. When I was uh, doing lunch with them, they said, give the message to the police chief. They said, this police department, they supported him from their heart. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papino?
So, uh, I appreciate the presentations tonight and uh, what I think uh, is the best opportunity I've seen yet to clearly present the budget to all who want to look and uh, for all of us to be able to openly uh, pick it apart and discuss it um, with plenty of time before we have to make a decision on it. So, thank you all for, for that. As far as all of the tributes, unfortunately due to uh, health and uh, work schedules, I was not able to and won't be able to make tomorrow for Bill. Um, did it, was able to make it yesterday downtown and that was a great representation by our department. I think our, our little department represented their paying tribute to Harmon and thirty-five others. Rivalled some of the contingents from LAPD, for example. So, uh, between Bill and between that, um, I just appreciate the, the family atmosphere.
So, between Bill and between that, I just appreciate the family atmosphere and the support that the whole city gives during those times. So, that's about all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to fellow council members and staff and all the people that attended the events the past couple of days where I could not. I really appreciate it, you know? I'll just leave it at that. Thank you to the staff for putting up with our proclivities and how we view things differently. We all have lives outside of this and we're not engrossed in it on a day-to-day basis. So, I appreciate it very much. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg. I mean, Councilman, looking over at you. Councilmember Lozano.
I want to echo what my colleagues have said about staff and the presentations. And I was telling the City Manager in our weekly meeting that I appreciate the opportunity to have these discussions ahead of time before the end of June. Because in the way it normally has worked, both in this organization and others, that, you know, you get the presentation in one meeting and two weeks later, you're voting on approving the budget. And this has been the most transparent, easiest to read, and easiest to consume budget process. And so, I thank you and Matt and all the directors who have done an awesome job. Thank you to the public who came tonight and had a comment. I really do think we need to look at all of our commissions and committees and determine what might be an appropriate equitable budget for them. And so, I think that Mr. Belliot and Ms. Johnson, their input was pretty important. And then, the other thing, just with the, you know, honoring the two men that we lost here in our city, Officer Graywall and Bill Forrest is, I think, is, has been, has been a good time and, you know, good opportunity, I think, for individuals to hit the reset button and think about what's really important and what we can do for each other as opposed to what we can do to each other, right? And so, today at Bill's event, it was really, a really good event and that really popped out for me. And so, I want to thank the families and they are certainly in our, in my prayers. The CAPS Appreciation Lunchon was awesome. It was finally great to see everybody back together and, you know, I look forward to their participation in the community for the next few months that we, you know, that we have of the year. And so, it'd be nice to really see them out and about. And then, on a more positive note, there are mock interviews that are happening at Galt High and Liberty Ranch High School. And I just want to throw this out. There's some opportunities in the next few weeks for folks to participate and assist them in that. And if you would reach out to Tracy Cross, if you have, you know, hour and a half of your day that you can spare, I don't have the exact dates in front of me, but they're pretty much from now until the end of, pretty much the end of May. Reach out to Tracy Cross over at the school district. And if you need her information, I can, shoot me an email and I can get it to you. But they are looking for professionals that can provide feedback to our students here in the, in the school district to sharpen their skills for job interview. And I had a contractor at my house today and the question always comes up, well, how far out are you? You know, you say you can do the work. I want to pay you, how far, how long is it going to take? And he is a month out. And the first thing he said was, I can't find anybody to work. And, you know, you hear that over and over, whether it's contractors or. And so, this is a good opportunity for our kids to get the upper hand, I think, and we can help them out with that. And then, lastly, I just wanted to mention the Galt Sunrise Rotary is having a Taco de Mayo event on May 14th here at Littleton. The tickets to attend are $10 and it's from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Unfortunately, I'll be out of the state and so, I won't be able to attend that. But I would encourage you all to purchase a ticket or two and support the Rotary, who is doing a lot of work in the area of scholarships and for our youth as well as public speaking engagements for them. And if you don't know, we have about, the Rotary Club has an interact club at the high schools and there are about 30 active members, people that are doing public service, kids that are involved in that. And so, this is a good opportunity for the community to support that. And again, it's May 14th, 5:00 to 9:00 at Littleton. And if you need tickets, you can reach out to me. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. I'll try to make this quick. I want to say that I also attended the ceremony today for Mr. Forrest and to echo what Mr. Lozano said, you know, unfortunately, I told his wife today that the only interaction I ever had with Bill was sometimes, you know, there was a couple of times where I met with him about a staff report, but mainly it was just dialogue at the council member. I said, I said to her, I said, the only time that him and I ever really interacted was me hitting him with the hard questions on staff reports. And seeing the pictures of him and hearing about from all his family and his friends and everything that he was involved in, it's, you know, you just, you realize you just don't, sometimes you work alongside people or you know people and you don't realize, you know, you know, what they're really like outside of the work environment. And so, it was nice to see that and it was very well-attended, so. And I want to say thanks to, you know, the council members. Some of you were able to go to the memorial for Officer Graywall. I wasn't able to attend, neither was Councilmember Vandenberg. But I'm happy that, you know, those of us as a group were able to make things we can make. Sometimes all of us can make this, sometimes we can't. But we tend to kind of do what we can to attend and it's good to see that we all try to make what we can. And I appreciate you guys, you know, all of us being able to do that. On the upshot, the Saturday Market, 7th, this weekend. I'm looking forward to it. Should be exciting. So, it's been mentioned many times already, but really looking forward to that and continue the success of that. And then, a couple of things I want to bring up, possible future agenda items. For one, it was mentioned tonight about canceling the local emergency order. I would be in favor of doing that, bringing that back as an agenda item in the near future to do that. I would like to obviously hear what the pros and cons of that would be, if there are any, just so we're making an informed decision. But I don't know if there's support from my fellow council to bring that back.
I'd support that discussion.
Do we have anybody else that would support that? Okay. And then, also, it's been mentioned a couple of times, well, it's been mentioned several times over the last, I don't know, long periods of time. But we have a gentleman that comes, seems to be coming, I don't know how frequently he shows up, but Mr. Robinson about his comments about the cannabis and stuff. And I know that's been the topic of some discussion in the community from time to time. And, you know, it's always something we hear, we're just like, okay. And I know we have it on our, our survey. And I don't know how accurate his numbers were on the survey results. But I would like to see, and I know we have a busy agenda. So, sometime in the future, we could do it. I would like to see us maybe have just a discussion, just a revisit of that. What does that look like? What does our municipal code look like? And what does it, what does it entail revisiting that and seeing if there's any tweaks to be made to it? And if that's something that we're even interested in visiting. I know it can be a very controversial subject. But I think as someone who is completely neutral on the subject, I do have a lot of people in the community that ask me about it. And I think it would be, I'd be doing a service to the community to at least visit that. I don't think it's right for me to not at least have a chance for us to discuss and maybe have people come and say how they feel about it and then decide if it's just something we don't want to touch or maybe we want to have a further dialogue moving forward. So, I would just think it's time that maybe we should consider having a discussion about that. I don't know if the council would even be open even having that as a future agenda item to discuss.
For clarification, Frank, are you asking for anything below a requirement to go to the ballot?
No, I'm just simply asking for it to be an agenda item to basically visit our municipal code. What does our current municipal code say regarding this topic? And what were options? What would, I just want to create, I just want to have a dialogue. And I want, I want the public, I want to see if we can get public to attend, have public weigh-in, and see where people feel about something like this and see if it's something that this council is in any interest in discussing beyond that point, whatever that means or not, for once and for all, at least in my, in my tenure.
I would have an interest in having a study session on what our code is and what it, what the current state law allows and have a study session on that. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. Like a, so a study session.
No, I.
Or is it a?
I agree with that. I've talked with the City Manager offline about it. And one, what our ordinance is, the bigger discussion is what a healthy ordinance could look like. Because we've seen a lot of places where they've done it and it's gone poorly. And we've seen some that has had successes. So, I'd be more than happy to participate in a study session on that. My big concern is that's some pretty heavy lifting to put on the staff right now with everything's going on to, to do the research and to give us solid advice on, you know, what an ordinance could really look like and what the process would be. So, it, down the road, when it can feasibly be done, I'm in favor.
Yeah. And again, I know we have a lot on our plate, maybe, you know, maybe in the fall, whenever staff has a chance, because I do want good information to be brought back. Because again, I have no idea what a good ordinance, bad ordinance looks like. I've never lived in a city, obviously, that's had such an ordinance. And so, I just want, I guess, just to.
Fortunately, you have a City Manager that's been through that process, all of it. So, well, I think the fall is probably a good timeframe because it is very complex and very divisive depending on the community. And my gut tells me it's going to be divisive even, so we need to be prepared for that.
Well, yeah. And again, I agree with you. I just, I think it's been talked about enough that I just want to tackle it head-on and at least have a discussion and have an open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Understood.
Well, with that, I think that's all I had. Again, thank you for everybody's patience tonight. Looks like I missed my 10 o'clock mark. Unfortunately, I was shooting for 10, but, but I'll say goodnight and we will adjourn the meeting at 10:03 PM.